I'm sorry. The March 20 of 2023 session of the Anarona County Council was called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Ms. Ledbetter will lead the invocation.
Please stand. I invite you to pray with me in a manner consistent with your faith and beliefs as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. As we gather here tonight, we invite you, Lord, to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome for those we are privileged to serve. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. It's a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
We will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council, we did. We actually received two and then a third one that was accidentally missed on March the 6th. So in all, we have three submissions that were received and are included as a part of that summary that's posted online.
Thank you. We will now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. At this time, can I have Henry Mueller? Kurt Savinson? I think I got that right for the first time in like 10 years I've been calling your name. Mohan Grover? So please come to the table, state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Is Rohan, where's he at? I thought I saw him here earlier. Did he leave? Get on the pink blouse? Or not blouse, the jacket. He stepped out? Okay. Sir?
My name is Henry Mueller. I live at 5909 Melton Avenue, Deal, Maryland. I've lived there for 59 years and I'd like to speak on the community center in Deal.
Yes, sir, please.
The... Problem, as I see it, is that there are very vast discrepancies between the amenities that are available in the northern and central part of the county compared to what's in Deal. People consider Deal a rural area, but in fact, there are a lot of families and homes in that area and the residents pay sometimes per capita much more than other areas of the county which have better amenities. I understand from discussions with some county members that it's going to be seven or eight years before a community center is built. We just got a park last year and they were going to develop that, but apparently that's on hold also for ball fields and north of the library for ball fields and other amenities. That's all I have to say about that. I just wanted to consider that in future.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Kurt Savinson. I live in Arnold. This is my second of a five-part budget primer series. Part one highlighted the preliminary policies that you ought to be involved in setting even before now. I recommended you adequately staff and fund an organizational infrastructure to better support existing staff and other neglected areas such as budget and research, community outreach. This will better support you and your staff and position you to truly partner with the executive branch. Tonight's part highlights some keys to understanding core revenue and expenditure elements of the operating budget. This starts with how to identify representative samples of taxpaying households to help you gain a richer and more complete sense of the relative tax burden within this population. This is going to highlight another policy question related to affordable housing that really ought to be publicly debated earlier than May 1st. On the expenditure side, I've identified two key data elements that are purposefully not publicly disclosed in any manner by the executive branch. Two specific examples demonstrate the fundamental nature of this undisclosed data. First, it should not be impossible to see how much is allocated to, say, the animal control care and control business unit. That's $3.5 million buried within a $52.8 million line item called Admin Services Bureau within the police department. Second, it should not be impossible to see how much is planned for overtime or pension sub items. That's $2.1 million and $6 million buried within the $32.5 million line item called Personal Services Object within that same admin bureau and police. Please read the attachment to my written testimony and prepare yourself for a thorough review of the upcoming budget and check out my Google site called AA County Citizen Share for more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grover? Your turn.
I understand this is a general description.
Yeah, you signed up, invitation to the audience.
So may I come to a specific problem or question? My question and concern is, we have these nonprofitable organizations that help the county. When we help the county and the citizens, it takes load off you folks. I know there are administrative costs involved, but I think you should help us keep the kids occupied so the policemen don't have to be there all the time. When I came here in 1966, Alan Smith, WTTG, would say, "Parents, this is 10 o'clock news. Channel 5, you know where your kids are. We want to keep the kids busy, occupied. It helps everybody. We don't want them to be doing drugs and everything. We cannot stop them." Some people have a habit. Habit is H-A-B-I-T. Take H out, you got A bit left. Take the A out, you got a bit left. Take the B out, you got it left. Take the I off, it's the tea you can drink. All right? You cannot, the policeman can't be everywhere, anywhere. Okay? The drugs are everywhere. We cannot stop them, not. But we can discourage people not to have it and tell them it's not good. So we need to keep the kids occupied. If I'm having an Easter egg hunt at my property, I don't want to be paying $100 to keep those kids busy. Of course, I will call the volunteer police and maybe they are police officers, we can do the volunteer work ourselves. The volunteer reserve police helps. So the point I'm trying to make in all our activities, we should get support from the county. You should help us with everything, not charge us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, the three of you. Please return to your seats. Is there anyone else in the audience who now wishes to speak that has not signed up? Please come up to the table, state your name, address, and your topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And please, this is for speaking on anything that is not on the printed agenda. Sir, let me start from the left, right? Go ahead while she's being seated. State your name and address for the record and...
Good day, everyone. My name is Cedric Tolson. I'm a building inspector out of PG County. I live in a Raff Crofton 2915 Greenwich Court. The reason why I'm here today is I was able to work with the Fire Marshal's Office as well as the building inspector, the building inspection office within this county, even though I work in PG County, I have to work with them as this is jurisdiction. Everybody is well aware of a Raff Silver Spring that had a fire in which the young lady died. At a Raff Crofton, it is owned by the same company and managed by the same company, which is Trinity. And we have discovered that there are several hundred violations in which we are pursuing to get done. And with that is sprinkler heads that have been painted over numerous violations in each apartment as well as fire extinguishers that are out of date. And the reason why I came out today is because when I look at the little kids that walk across the street to Crofton Elementary, I don't want to have to speak to anybody's family and say, "I didn't do everything in my power to get it addressed." So the biggest thing I would like the leadership to do today is work to push forward legislation that's going to have a lot stiffer penalties than $1,000. This company collects roughly $800,000 in rent per month. So I would like to see something in the range of maybe $10,000 to $20,000 per violation, especially when they're putting families at risk of fire. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. My name is Matt Mindahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater. Sometimes several decades ago, when the county created the code, it had a few land use categories and some broad ideas about how to maintain the rural and agricultural nature of the county, like a straight and smooth road toward the future that all wanted. And it seemed to work for a while, but over time, areas around the county grew quickly. People moved in, wanting schools and roads, water access, services that had never even been thought of. People needed houses and stores at a scale much beyond what was intended originally in the code. Amendments were made. The code became twisty and turny as a road. Potholes appeared. Meanwhile, all this development was stressing the code, being asked to make changes to the rules for the whole county that would benefit just one or two users, as well-meaning citizen legislators tried to help their constituents, creating exceptions and exceptions to exceptions and more exceptions that circumvented the original intent of the code. More twists, more turns, more potholes at just the time that development is driving faster and faster down this road. On behalf of the Growth Action Network, GAN believes it's a long pastime to repave and straighten the code road to serve the needs of a county in a second decade of this 21st century that wants to preserve its forests and trees and improve water quality and rivers and bays, address the urgent need for redevelopment and affordable housing. GAN believes that individual land use decisions should be left to the regional stakeholder advisory committees and then to OPZ to grant, follow the rules or grant a variance rather than the council creating ever more twists, turns, and potholes that apply the rules for one person to the whole county. And we'd like to see hybrid meetings soon. And again, we suggest that the council could use a staff person to upgrade its research and analytical capacity. Thank you to those of you who've joined our GAN meetings, and we look forward to those of you who haven't soon. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And just for the record, in the coming months, probably this late summer, this council has been meeting to retool how we operate as a council legislatively as well as operate our meetings. And so later this year, you will more than likely see options for us to do virtual meetings because I've heard it a number of times over the last few council meetings. So I just want to put that on the record. We are, we've already had a meeting in reference to it, how we can implement it. And later this year, our intent is to actually implement it. And so that is something we are striving to achieve. So, sir?
Okay. So this is very timely. This is David Morseberger, kind of live at 1241 Village Lake Drive in Davidsonville. First, I want to congratulate everyone. I've been here since the elections and congratulate on you winning your elections. It's a real honor to kind of represent the citizens that, you know, in your districts. Second, thank you for this meeting being in the evening. I try to get to Annapolis and sometimes it's really hard to get to work to testify in front of the General Assembly. What this is about is very timely to what you just mentioned. I was looking through the charter and especially in appendix A's, the rules and procedures, and there's a couple of things I think would be great if you could, you know, kind of look at. One is I noticed that you can change the procedures through a resolution, so I think this is, you know, definitely possible. The time limitation, we get two minutes to speak. Sometimes it's really hard and it says that it's limited by the amount of time specified by the chair. So depending on the topic, maybe you want to say two and a half minutes, three minutes, depending on the topic. The order of business, this is the main one. In Annapolis, when you go and, well, here, after you do the public testimony, then you vote on the bill. In Annapolis, sometimes they don't vote immediately, they kind of wait and vote. So like an example here, there may be a lot of people here, maybe it would be not good to say, "Let's delay the vote. That way you can take all the new information into account before you're rushed into a vote." So maybe kind of saying, "We'll vote on this in the next council meeting." Other ones is questions to the speaker. A lot of times, I think it'd be great if there could be not a dialogue, not a debate, but if there are concise questions that might be asked to the public, the person from the public, if they spent their time, they came down here, you might want to, you know, ask them any kinds of concise clarifying questions. You know, in the end, more questions, more dialogue is always better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Jane McWilliams. I live at 15 Mayo Avenue. This is Bay Ridge, Annapolis, 21403. I have lived in this county all my life and I am now speaking directly for the Bay Ridge Civic Association authorized to do so by the President. The Civic Association, Bay Ridge Civic Association requests an amendment to Bill 623, an additional amendment.
Ma'am, that's only printed agenda for tonight, so we're going to discuss that. So if you want, if you'd like...
Would you like me to delay this to some other time?
Well, you can just pause your comments and when we have public testimony on 623 so that people who can hear and they know which bill it specifically should be applied to. Tonight.
So I can speak to that at that time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Last call for anyone willing to speak on anything that's not on the printed agenda. Seeing the movement, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Ms. Radvian? It's a withdrawal?
Oh, thank you. I am so sorry. I forgot. Yes. I would like to withdraw Bill Number 14-23 and I intend on doing a little more work on it and bringing it back at a future date yet to be determined. Thank you.
Perfect. Love the surprise look. The, oh, it was... May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution where minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 6, 2023.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Radvian and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of March 6, 2023. All right, second?
The other second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing the motion carries, the minutes of March 6, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2023, An Ordnance Concerning Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, Walk and Roll, and a Rundle Adoption. Bill Number 2123, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Housing for the Elderly of Moderate Needs.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 523, An Ordnance Concerning Approving the Determination of Certain County-owned Property Known as 100 Summit Avenue. That's actually not the right title. I'm sorry. Resolution, Resolution Number 523, Resolution Approving the Determination of Certain County-owned Property Known as 100 Summit Avenue in Glen Burnie, Maryland as Surplus Property. Bill Numbers, Resolution Number 623, An Ordnance Concerning Supporting the Anorundal County Board of Education's Revised Fiscal Year 2024 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction. Resolution Number 723, An Ordnance Urging the Maryland General Assembly to Oppose House Bill 119 and Any Amendments to Conform Senate Bill 199 to State House Bill 119.
May I get a motion to suspend Rule 506 to allow for a vote on Resolution 723 this evening?
So moved, Radvian.
Have a second?
Second, Ledbetter.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on motion to suspend Rule 506.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Unfortunately, the motion to suspend the rules has failed because it needed five votes.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 623.
Bill Number 623, An Ordnance Concerning Public Work, Subdivision and Development, Zoning Accessory Dwelling Units.
Mr. Barron? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw you move in there, so, one second here. Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. So we've spent quite a good bit of time on this bill and after, that was after two years of research and drafting. So we are, we are deep into the weeds, hopefully making some final tweaks on this bill and really looking to create additional housing opportunities or alternatives for the county, allowing seniors to age in place, allowing for different options for people with disabilities and veterans, for young people who may not be able to afford to rent or buy in at market rates and possibly finding something close to home. So lots of benefits from accessory dwelling units and hopefully we're on the, one of the last meetings on this bill and I look for all the support from my colleagues.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to be here tonight. Reiterate, oh, well, first let me introduce who's sitting at the table with me. I have Lynn Miller from OPZ, Kelly Kenny from Law, Karen Henry, our DPW Director, and Claudia O'Kee from IMP. We want to reiterate what, much of what the sponsor just stated. This bill has been worked on at length. There are still, I think, a couple of amendments that we expect to see tonight and happy to discuss them at the appropriate time. We are supportive of this bill, look forward to continuing the collaborative work to get it ready for passage. So with that, I'm not going to belabor our points on this. If the council has any questions, happy to answer them now or wait until we get to amendments.
All right. Madam Secretary, did we receive any, we will now open the, as you were, I scrolled down too far here. Is there any discussion? 623 from the council, seeing none. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 623. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did. Mr. Chair, we received 12 submissions ahead of time. That all went to the council. They've been added to that summary that's posted online and will be added to the record.
All right. Now we hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. At this time for Bill 623, can I get Mr. Savinson? 623. Kurt Savinson. Mr. Kurt? This is Bill 623, this is the ADU. Ma'am, ladies? Are you going to testify after, do you want to speak about 623 as well?
I have questions about the zoning change.
Okay, okay. And ma'am, are you going to speak on 623 as well? Okay. All right. Mrs. Savinson, please state your name and address for the records in two minutes.
My name is Kurt Savinson. I live in Arnold. The sponsor of this bill argues that it's based on available data and case studies, not fears, and will address the need of over 27,000 families waiting to get an appropriate roof over their head as opposed to the privileged and insensitive concerns over parking and density. First, I see no evidence of a balanced analysis of available data and case studies has been done in a transparent manner leading up to this bill. Maybe I'm missing something, but I'm not seeing anything online that is pointing to these years of research and development. Second, nothing in this bill targets the low-income population most in need of affordable housing. This proposed law is like blowing up a balloon, then releasing it, and hoping it eventually lands where you want it to. I don't think that's good policy. Why not target these ADUs to moderate or low-income homeowners by requiring they meet an eligibility criterion or do homeowners that commit to renting to such target populations? At a minimum, the granting of waivers should be limited to incentivize such homeowners. A citizen complained last meeting that this was being fast-tracked. A council member refuting that technical fact highlights the need for a culture change. True community engagement is needed before legislation is even drafted. There's been a lot of this lately, from an APF work group meeting for two-plus years, yet whose very membership is a mystery, to half-baked proposals like this bill, to wreck-and-parks projects that blow up when overly complete designs are first shared with stakeholder communities when it's too late to consider alternatives. I'm asking you to lead by example. Why is my request for the membership of an APF work group meeting for the past two years being treated as a formal Public Information Act request? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mrs. Savinson, you can go back to the seat just because I want to open it up to anyone else that wants to speak on Bill 623. We have three at the table already. If there are an additional three that want to come up, please come to the table, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to speak on 623, which is the ADU bill that we're discussing. Ma'am, I'll go to you to the left since you sat down first. So, so that's, so just for the record, this two minutes is an opportunity for you to speak to us on issues with the bill. It's not necessarily a back-and-forth dialogue. So if there are questions, you just want to pose them out there for us to contemplate, that's fine as well.
Do you want me to speak now?
Yes.
I have questions about if these accessory dwellings are put behind primary residences and they become rental property, will there be an inspection property of the rental dwellings? Any type of regulations? Any type of fire requirements? How will this affect appraisal of the main property for real estate taxes? And what is the fire safety requirements going to be? And how will they collect taxes on the rents that will be collected on these accessory dwellings if they are paid in cash?
And ma'am, was your name and address for the record?
My name is Patsy Ertley and I live at, in Bay Ridge.
Thank you. Ma'am? There you go, it's on.
Okay. Thank you for your patience and somebody who has no idea what is going on. Okay, okay. If you can, that would be good. The Bay Ridge Civic Association, which I represent tonight with authorization from the President, requests a text amendment to the definition of density in Article 18, zoning 18-1-101 definitions for density. We would like you to add line four to conservation resource area or low-density area of the critical area. We would like these words added to the bill. As you know, the critical area is the Resource Protection Program that governs land use within 1,000 feet of high tide or tidal wetlands. The program aims to minimize the negative impacts of new development on water quality and to conserve... and to conserve fish, wildlife, and plant habitats. The LDA regulation ensures that development and redevelopment is consistent with the prevailing character of land use. The Bay Ridge neighborhood falls within the LDA classification. Residents have invested in the protection of the natural environment, environment of the Annapolis Neck Peninsula through environmental stewardship projects, as well as careful development of individual properties to adhere strictly to all LDA requirements of the critical area program. The density count is the principal designation used to label an area as LDA, allowing an accessory dwelling unit not to be counted. When calculating density within an LDA, will significantly increase the allowable density, thus significantly impacting the environmental protection controls that were designed and enacted by the critical area program to protect the overall quality of the Chesapeake. We urge you to add these additional words, low-density area, to this bill, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name's Claire Corcoran. I am Vice President of the Hillsmere Shores Improvement Association, and we have a concern regarding 623, because we have, in our community, we have covenants against accessory dwelling units. Now, we understand the county could care less about that, or they don't enforce it or anything. However, we've had problems, many problems in the past, where people start building, they get permits because you, nobody double checks, and they give a permit, people start working, they start building, then we find it, and then we have to say, hey, we don't allow this, and you put us in a position where we are now fighting with neighbors, and we're taking on the legal expense of having to do that fight, where if they had been told ahead of time, please check with your community. And so that's, that's an issue. We're, I'm just saying upfront, you know, we would really appreciate if the permit department would flag our community and just let people know and not hand out permits. You also have the issue in our community, I'd like you to consider not only ours, but others in the county. We are a community of wells, we have public sewer. One of the concerns brought to me by one of our citizens was that we already have, we know we have stresses on our aquifer, we have groundwater issues, and you put in more houses, more people into an area that's using wells and not public water, that is a concern. So consider that, please, that we are not, you know, like everybody else who's got public water and sewer in the county. We also have another community where, other than our main drag, our side streets are quite narrow. So the parking issue, the lack, the fact that you don't care how many cars are parked on the street or on a property itself, which we have a real problem with in Hillsmere, we have no fire hydrants. And we also, we require a 15-foot setback, you only require seven. So, you know, we could see fire to fire to fire, jumping house to house in this situation. It changes the character of our community, obviously, and exempting the people from paying connection charges is just pushing that tax burden onto the rest of us, means that tax increases. So, you know, and really you're saying that if someone lives in the house, they can rent this property, and they can rent their principal residence as well, if they're the principal owner or dweller. Well, okay, those people go to Florida for six months, they're going to rent their house, they're going to rent the ADU. Pardon me?
Please summarize.
Please summarize. So we are against this completely, and if you move forward with this, what we are asking is that you simply, with those communities that are on wells, that you reconsider this, and also for those of us who do have covenants, and we've asked this before, that we simply be able to pass that on to your permit people to be flagged, so that at least people come to us first.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. Matt Minahan, Growth Action Network. We applaud the bill. We think it's one of the many solutions needed for affordable housing here. You've all received a message from our Legislative Committee Chair, Kate Fox, but a couple of amendments to the bill we think are really important. We think there should be no exemption allowed for ADUs in the critical area. These areas are already fragile enough, there should be no construction of ADUs in the critical area, and in particular, where the property is on a septic system. If you're on public sewer, okay, fine, but if you're on a septic system on the water's front in the critical area, you're just adding more damage to the environment. We think there should be no new construction of ADUs in historic areas. We heard that last week from, last time, from some other people testifying, and we agree. We think only an individual homeowner or trust should be able to construct an ADU in a separate structure. This would eliminate some of the impact fee questions that came up earlier, and not allow developers to sell two homes instead of one upon new construction. Allow the homeowner, once she or he owns it, to build an ADU, but we shouldn't allow a developer to build 40 homes in a 20-home development. We also would like to see ADUs, well, last thing I'll just say is, we hope you make this a pilot program. Put a five-year sunset on this thing, evaluate it after three, get a good look at it, and come back in five years, as you're doing with the, as you've done with the school capacity bill. Come back in five years and revisit this, and amend it then as needed. So we applaud the bill, we applaud its intent, there's some technical fixes we think would address some of these problems and some larger problems as well, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Please proceed. Take your seats in the room, appreciate it. The public hearing on Bill number 623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 623.
An ordinance concerning public work subdivision and development zoning accessory dwelling units.
Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to address some of the comments that were made in the public hearing.
So first off, Mr., well, Mr. Savinson, I actually, is he still here, or did he leave? I don't see him. Oh, there he is. He left. I would be happy to gather the data and the case studies that we looked at. It had never been requested, so I will happily gather those things together. And yes, this really did amount to about two years' worth of work. With respect to the questions about critical area, this law, this bill does not exempt anything from the critical area laws. Critical area laws, both state and local, must be followed. There is no workaround for that, and I believe, and I can defer to one of the attorneys, but the density requirement that we've talked about, or the density, does not, would not apply with respect to the state critical area laws. Is that correct?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, the critical area laws would apply if anybody applied for a permit for an ADU, they would have to meet the lot coverage requirements and any setbacks and, and things that are applicable in the critical area. The definition of density does indicate that accessory dwelling units and farm tenant houses may not be included when calculating density unless they're located in the resource conservation, so area of the critical area. So they would not be subject to any more strict density requirements there. Or, I'm sorry, they would be subject to the density requirements there.
But in the LDA, they'd be treated the same as any other?
In the LDA, the LDA is not specifically called out in that definition, so they would not be, they would be treated a little bit differently in the LDA.
But there would be no, there would be no avoiding state law with respect to LDA and how much of a lot is allowed to be built?
Right. All the lot coverage requirements would still apply, correct?
Okay, so there wouldn't be any, like, exceptions for ADUs, so that those square footage with respect to LDA would stand, and that would be calculated towards the allowable coverage allowed under the state critical area LDA?
Yes, the lot.
Okay, so there's no getting around that. I just want to make, make it clear that this is, does not get around any critical area, area law. It does not get around any building code, so everything still has to follow all the building codes. Covenants, again, we, you know, I heard the issue of we would like to, you know, have our inspections and permits office possibly refer folks applying for permits to a particular, you know, to a particular homeowners association or improvement association. I think that's something we could do, but we probably should be looking at in a separate piece of legislation and not here. With respect to wells and septic, that was another area that we discussed, and they must meet the same stress test. So you can't automatically just build an accessory dwelling unit without having tested the sufficiency of the wells and the septic. So I just want to know that we really did cross, we, I met with almost every single department head in the county to make sure that we had crossed our Ts and dotted our Is with respect to this, you know, with respect to making sure that we're not putting things, putting new things out there. And while this is a piece of affordable housing, I don't think I ever claimed that this would address the needs of all 27,000 families on the waiting list. It is simply a tool in a toolbox, and it is a tool that actually is more likely geared to seniors who would like to age in place, perhaps, you know, their children with families would like to live in the primary dwelling, but they would like to be close by so they can, you know, visit with their grandchildren and their children, maybe get needed care. Could be vice versa, a senior, you know, living in the primary house, and maybe a young couple or a young, a young adult who needs a place to live. So it's a housing option. It's not necessarily, by the nature of their size, they're limited to 800 square feet. Generally, 800 square feet in this county is less expensive than a lot of other housing, so it's, you know, we're not looking at specific market tests. You know, we're not going to be looking at, you know, specific criteria, but it does expand the housing option, and because of the nature of its, you know, square footage, it's likely to have an impact on the more affordable. I'm not even going to say affordable, we're not getting into income tests with all this. There's so many other needs besides just income that need housing. I think, I think that's all I took. So if there's additional questions that didn't get answered here, please feel free to email me. It's my name, lisa.rodvian@aacounty.org, and I will come up with the answers if I can.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 12.
Amendment number 12. Just so I can show it up on the screen there. This amendment prohibits a variance for an accessory dwelling unit constructed on or after the effective date of Bill number 623 to reduce the minimum setback requirements to an adjacent lot located in a residential district.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really a friendly amendment after the work session last week, where an example of someone who has an existing accessory, or I shouldn't say accessory dwelling unit, an existing structure on their property would like to turn it into an accessory dwelling unit. My amendment at the previous council session was not intended to prohibit those who already have structures that could be used, but rather to keep in mind the small lots that we have in the county and building close to other, or adjacent residential lots. And with that, I would motion to adopt.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not, I'm not sure that Amendment number 12 meets the, I'd like clarification from the table, really. I'm not sure the amendment meets the, the, the property owners that have an accessory structure currently on their property that may or may not meet the setbacks. It's not, it's not a dwelling, they are looking to turn their garage into a dwelling, and maybe it's only six feet from their neighbor. So I, I think I, I'm just a little confused on the nuances of the language. I think Amendment 12 would address a dwelling, but not an accessory structure. So I'm just looking for clarification, which is why there's Amendment 13 coming behind it.
I'll, I'll give it a shot first. I, I think you're correct, and I'm going to kick it down to the table to, to the experts, understand the sponsor's intent. We were a little concerned about the clarity of this amendment to achieve your intent, and then we saw the, the following amendment, and just for the record, I think we prefer 13 to 12. But if, if somebody from Office of Law or OPZ wants to speak to the councilwoman's question, hopefully you can give it a shot.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, echoing what Mr. Barron said, I do think that the next amendment, Amendment number 13, is a little bit more clear, that that would apply to both a new building or an exist, or I'm sorry, the, the, Amendment 13 would apply to an existing building. Amendment 12, I construe only to apply to a new construction, and I think that may not address the concern that you had, Ms. Pickard, with regard to an existing building for Amendment number 12.
So, so we were, we were drafting amendment simultaneously, I think, so when they popped up, they, they are a little, they, to me, they're different, and I, I think they do different things. The goal of, well, we can talk about my amendment next. I, I don't, I don't know what, Amendment 12 here, we've already prohibited variances, we've prohibited variances for ADUs to setbacks in the bill. We've already amended the bill to do that. So I'm not sure what, how this is different from what we've already done. I'm just a little confused.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, to me, reading the two amendments, although I know we have not gotten to 13, they're different ways of almost saying the same thing. This Amendment 12 says that you can have an accessory dwelling unit as long in a property that is closer than current setbacks, if it already exists, and that you cannot get a variance for a dwelling unit constructed on or after the effective date of the bill. So that's, right.
Yeah, actually, reading the, the text amendment here, I think actually, I agree with Ms., we did prohibit variances already, and so now we're trying to allow a variance to occur for structures that already exist.
Mr. Chairman, this amendment would allow for someone to seek a variance for a existing accessory dwelling unit. So that, that solves a problem, it just doesn't solve the problem I brought up in the work session. Therefore, there's Amendment 13.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, because then I'll go back to, to Ms. Hummer after you, just, but I want you to try to clear this up.
Okay. This question is for the Office of Law. Could the two amendments exist simultaneously?
Just one moment, if I can look at both of them together. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I think they could, they could exist simultaneously. They, they say similar things, but just in a, in a different way, but I do think that they both have the same goal, and I think they could exist simultaneously, although I didn't write them both out together to make sure they don't conflict at all.
All right. Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I think I'm echoing the same concern, that the first one says an accessory dwelling unit constructed, or, whereas the second one would be, it could be a structure that's not an accessory dwelling unit, but it's already an existing structure that they could then convert to an accessory dwelling unit. Very sim, similar in many ways, but I'm, I'm kind of agreeing that I think 13 addresses more directly the issue that Ms. Pickard brought up for that, but I, I think the intent is very similar for both of them, is to not penalize someone who already has a structure in place, but.
Mr. Volkey?
Oh, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess this would be my question. If I have a garage on my property, and it's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's just a garage, and then I want to convert it into an accessory dwelling unit, at that point, I'm constructing an accessory dwelling unit, right? Because that existing unit is not, you can't classify that as an ADU. It's not an ADU, it's a garage. So on the conversion... So on the conversion, I'm now, I'm now going through the process of converting it, even though it's an existing structure and it's already built. So it seems like Amendment 12 would say you couldn't convert the garage to an accessory dwelling unit. Seems like Amendment 13 would say that you could convert the garage to an accessory dwelling unit. Am I reading that right?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney.
It's either Law or Ms. Miller.
Yeah, yes, and I think that's part of the reason why 13 is probably preferable, because it gets to the same goal without that language that might make it a little less clear.
Well, we're assuming that it's the same goal. I don't know that it's the same goal.
I'm assuming, yeah.
Right. If the goal is to take existing structures, ADU or otherwise, and say that they, that there's no variance for them, then 13 would not be preferable.
Correct.
12 would be preferable.
Correct.
If you pass both of them, how are you going to read them in conjunction with one another? Because it seems like they're directly conflicting. If I have this garage and...
Mr. Volkey, sorry to interrupt.
You want somebody else to go?
No, no, I think, I think we may have a solution that, that resolves, and I don't want us to go down this path if, if, if sponsored. I think we have the intent to withdraw the motion and eventually withdraw this amendment. So the, who was this, who seconded the motion? So if, if...
I have to withdraw.
Right, no, he would have to withdraw his second.
I'll withdraw.
And then you can withdraw your...
So this is, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I know we have a lot of folks here to testify tonight. So with that, same intent, better language, apparently, so motion to withdraw the amendment.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13.
Amendment Number 13. This amendment allows a variance to reduce the minimum setback requirements to an adjacent lot located in a residential district if the variance is for a structure that was in existence before the effective date of Bill Number 623, and the structure is being converted to an accessory dwelling unit.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this issue was brought up, if you've been watching the ADU conversation for the last couple meetings, we did pass an amendment to disallow a variance regarding setbacks. I did not vote for that. So this is a compromise, coming back to my colleagues, to say if, if there is a homeowner with a current garage or some other structure on their property that they would like to consider turning into an ADU, but it does not meet the setback requirement in this bill, they can seek a variance. It doesn't mean a variance will be granted, but they can go through the process and make that attempt to convert an existing garage. We know we have properties all over this county that have a primary dwelling unit home and a detached garage somewhere on their property that they may want to turn into an accessory dwelling unit, but it may not meet the setback. So I would like those individuals to at least be able to seek a variance and see if they can be successful through that process, if it is deemed appropriate.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Rodvian, second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Mr. Barron?
Administration's sports.
All right. Madam, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 13.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 13 has been adopted.
All right. Bill Number, is there any additional? Nope. All right. All right, so Bill Number 623 will be heard on April 3, 2023. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1023.
Bill Number 1023. An Ordinance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management, Subdivision and Development Water Quality Improvement Projects.
All right. 1023. All right, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proud to bring 1023 before you, hopefully, for a final vote tonight. As you will recall, this has previously been discussed and was heard and amended at the March 6 meeting, where we made sure to include projects that were providing the kind of environmental benefit but may not be county-sponsored. As a reminder of what this bill does, this helps streamline the approval process for certain environmental water quality improvement projects and reduces the county permit review costs. This bill is tailored to focus on projects that are self-mitigating and routinely improved. Staff are here to answer any questions, and I should introduce them too, just so you know, our Environmental and Policy Director, Eric Michelson, Ms. Miller from OPC, Mr. Badami from IMP, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So we're happy to answer any questions, and we ask you pass this bill tonight.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will now hear, open the public hearing on Bill Number 1023. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received one submission. The whole council got a copy. It is included in the summary that's posted online, and it will go into the record.
Thank you. We'll now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. At this moment, I believe there's one. Mr. Miller, I'm sorry, Mueller, Henry Mueller?
Wait, by the way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill Number 1023? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 1023 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1023.
Bill Number 1023. An Ordinance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management, Subdivision and Development Water Quality Improvement Projects.
All right. Madam Secretary, is, any final discussions on 1023? No amendments. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Bill Number 1023.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 1023 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1223.
Bill Number 1223. An Ordinance Concerning Conveyance of Surplus Property, Improved County-Owned Property, Part of the Dorsey Run Road Right-of-Way in Annapolis Junction, Maryland.
All right. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to bring 1223 before you. I have Mr. Daniels from Real Estate and Central Services with me, and Ms. Fiedler from the Office of Law here for all the tough questions. As discussed at the March 14 work session, Bill 1223 approves the disposition of a 2.9 acre county-owned property in Annapolis Junction in the chairman's district. The bill approves the sale of the property for a total of $2.2 million to Microsoft Corporation, which owns several adjacent parcels surrounding the property. 1223 is the second legislative step of the county's two-step surplus process. The county council previously adopted a resolution, that resolution was 4522, which determined this property surplus after canvassing all county departments and agencies. Pursuant to code requirements, the county performed two independent appraisals of the property, the average of which is the agreed-upon sale price. Representatives are here to answer any questions, but as, as you all know, this is a good win for the county. County had no use for this property, and, and we're going to get a, a little bit of money that we can put to good use.
It's always good. Any discussion? Seeing no lights. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1223. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll also hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. I did not see anyone who had signed up ahead of time for 1223. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill Number 1223? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 1223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1223.
Bill Number 1223. An Ordinance Concerning Conveyance of Surplus Property, Improved County-Owned Property, Part of the Dorsey Run Road Right-of-Way in Annapolis Junction, Maryland.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Bill Number 1223.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 1223 has been passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1323.
Bill Number 1323. An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Special Events Permitting.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you. And while my team comes and, sir?
Sir? Hey, sir? Sir, if you can take, you know, we haven't called up the audience yet. Yeah, this is, we know what bill you're here to testify for, so don't want to stand in your way.
So joining me is our Office of Emergency Management Director, Ms. Emmerich, our Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. Schultz, our, from Police, Captain Rodriguez, from Inspections and Permits, Ms. Velez, and from the Office of Law, Mr. Ethan Hunt. I think we're going to hear a lot of discussion on this bill tonight. I want to sort of remind everyone of the discussion that we had at the work session, make a couple of comments, and I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Emmerich for a few comments, and then we're happy to, to listen to the public and answer any questions, as council may have. This bill stems out of discussions with county agencies regarding the need for a process to ensure that events within the county receive adequate support and county resources to ensure the safety and welfare of the participants and the general public. The county currently does not have a process in place to address public safety and resource needs of special events. This has resulted in instances where events have had inadequate crowd control, sanitation facilities, security, traffic management, or first aid coverage. When situations like these arise, county agencies frequently have to step in to fulfill the needs for the safety and welfare of the event, participants, and the general public, oftentimes with little or no notice, sending the county's public safety professionals scrambling to ensure we have coverage. As we discussed in the work session, the bill is structured to, to provide the county with the situational awareness, as Ms. Emmerich often says, of the events that are going on in the county. It does not require event promoters or, or event locations to use county services. It just requires the demonstration of adequate resources to cover the health and safety of the participants of the event. The bill is structured so that there is up to one year before the event. The promoter can file for the permit. The county has a limited time to review that permit, 30 days, and must approve, deny, or request a modification. The county stands ready to work with our event promoters to ensure that we have a smooth process so that everyone is able to get the permits that they need and have all the great events that go on in this county. The last comment I'll, I'll make about this before I, I turn it over to Ms. Emmerich, we do have a number of amendments coming, the, the, we will discuss them at the appropriate time, but want to thank every member of this council for the many, many long hours of discussion that we have had on this bill, and, and I anticipate we will have some more. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Emmerich.
Good evening, members of council. This bill is very important to public safety, hence the unified front from the Office of Emergency Management, Police, and Fire. In the time we have seen an increase in special events after the pandemic, it has become evident that Anorundal County needs a streamlined permitting process, like our surrounding jurisdictions, to ensure the safety of residents and visitors. The county has had difficulty ensuring the safety of the general public and event staff, straining resources and personnel. This is made even more difficult when special events are only known weeks before, leading to public safety contacting event organizers, hoping for information and collaboration. Experienced and less experienced sponsors have expressed frustration that you had to visit multiple pages to find permitting information, and the process can be overwhelming. Less experienced sponsors underestimate the planning that is needed for special events and the security risks that it presents. One only has to look at recent events involving vehicle ramming, shootings, excessive capacities, et cetera, to understand it is not if, but for when it happens. The intention of this bill is for the safety of the county, its residents, and visitors, and we welcome questions. Thank you. And I'd just like to add, if my police or fire counterparts have any additional comments to add.
Pretty much just from the police department side, is just to coincide with what Preeti has said, is that the intent of this bill is to be able to manage these processes for the public safety of the county.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. So I'm going to start off at the beginning, because I like definitions. So there are a number of definitions in this bill that then never are used at any other point in this bill. So you're defining things, but you're not using them. So for instance, you have athletic event, you have concert, you do use multiple day event at a further point once, nonprofit organization, owner, parade, all of those things never show up again in the bill. So I'm just curious why we're creating definitions in a bill that we're not using, because typically we would create the definition to then use it somewhere else in the bill. So is there something else coming? Is this, was, are these sort of legacies? Because maybe something was written differently before, and then you subsumed these under another definition? So I, I guess that's my first question, is why are these definitions included in the bill if they're not used?
Pete Barron, I'm not 100% sure. I think it's probably a little bit of a combination of wanting some clarity of those, and maybe an earlier draft had some of those. Happy to have a conversation with you if, if we need to make some changes.
Can I follow up?
Please.
I, I just think, the reason I ask that is, I think that one of the things that people who read this bill initially go, oh my goodness, what's going on with this bill, is that you have all these things included in here, right? Athletic event, which you don't use and you really don't talk about, concert, which you have and you don't talk about, nonprofit organizations. So I think initially, when people read these things, they go, whoa, this is a really big bill, this is applying to everything. And then when you're not using these terms later on, maybe they're not really needed in the bill, and so maybe it's sort of triggering people in a way that, that isn't helping. So I'm just asking about it.
I do have a question. In reference to, how long were, did the county work on this, this piece of legislation?
Well, I'll, I'll let Ms. Emmerich answer that question. Go ahead. You were the one doing all the work.
It's about a year and a half to two years.
During that year and a half to two years, was, was there any public engagement on this, on this legislation?
In terms of, we had a work group set up with county agencies, and taking our experience with the events that we have coordinated through, through the years, and that historical knowledge, that's where the legislation was developed.
Did, did you guys meet with any stakeholders that were, that are, that would potentially be impacted by the legislation?
We shared drafts back in March of 2022 with several stakeholders, soliciting feedback. And I know Ms. Emmerich and her team has met with many of the promoters and organizers.
Only reason I bring it up, because we've gotten a lot of emails, and you probably have heard this, that, from entities that are potentially impacted by, which I'm supportive of trying to make sure the, the public safety apparatus is, is postured in a way that's going to make sure safety is there always. The emails are just in reference to, you know, not being involved in the process like we've done with other pieces of legislations. And so I was just trying to confirm for the public whether or not those steps were included in this before it, you know, became public.
I am not aware of who may have emailed that, so it's hard for me to speak to whether
I want, first, I think a lot of the folks in the audience right now are probably here because they're very interested in this bill, and I just want to express, and I suspect my colleagues feel the same, that we have two very important interests that we need to balance. And one is the public safety, that, you know, we, that our departments in the county can make sure that there's enough emergency responders available, whether that's fire, whether that's police, EMS, that's part of fire, medical emergencies, and make sure, we want to make sure that people are safe, that they know that they can go to an event, and everything is going to be, they don't have to worry about those things, that they're addressed. On the other side, we also have a very important interest in making sure that event holders who invest a lot of time and money into their facilities, into their events, can also go forward and not feel like they, you know, are on edge. Is there something that get, you know, might get pulled out at the last minute? So as folks come forward to testify, and please speak up if you disagree, but I think this is, can I safely say that this is, I haven't talked to everyone, so I'll just say, I believe it's probably everyone that wants to balance these two and make sure that both are met in this bill. So any amendments and discussion tonight will be towards that end, making sure that these, both of these very important goals are achieved.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yep.
Just want to kick it over to a few people a little smarter than me that may have an answer to one of Mr. Volkey's questions. Well, just for the record, I'm going to ask them.
And for the record, not that I'm any smarter than him, but just to answer the question related to the definitions of why maybe that became part of the legislation. In researching this and the discussions with outside jurisdictions who already have these processes in place, we wanted to be clear that there was definition as to what a special event was, and the type of events that are listed there, the reason that they are listed there, is those are the types of events that we historically see annually in the county, 150 to 200 times a year, that are events that create those types of strains and require that level of oversight that we discussed. Athletic events such as triathlons with, you know, hundreds and hundreds of runners, which creates disruption to traffic and security and crowd concern. So those types of events, that's probably why they were listed there and maybe not addressed anywhere else, is because it was to define what the special event, examples per se of what a special event is.
I was just going to say, Ms. Hummer helped me read a little further along. I found it. It's there. Yeah, I am, right between you two.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question came from a constituent who holds an event in the county annually. If the process is followed, this bill passes, and somebody fills out an application, has county staff there as part of the plan, and God forbid, an event does happen, who would then be liable in that situation? Would it be the event, the event sponsor, the county, the location? Or is that a question we don't know the answer to tonight?
Maybe you could expand a little. I'm not sure we're following exactly. Let me try that again.
Sure. If there were to be an event that someone files the application, goes through all of the appropriate steps, something unexpected takes place, there are, God forbid, some injuries or such, who would be liable? Or is that not even a question? This comes from a constituent, so I'm asking for the record.
I think it's a fair question, and I think I'll turn it over to the Office of Law.
Okay.
I mean, normally it would be the property owner who would be liable for any injuries or events that occur on their own property.
Okay, thank you.
Do want to see the Delegate Bagnow and Delegate Pruski in the back there. Appreciate you guys coming down. At this time, we will now, I don't see any other discussion, and we will now open the public hearing on bill number thirteen twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we received about sixty-six submissions ahead of time through the online testimony tool. We also got a few emails and some letters. Everything has been shared with the council, and there is a summary of the online submissions posted to the website.
All right, well, now I hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. These are folks who signed up online and are, so when you please come up, please state your name and address for the record, and you will be allotted two minutes to speak on this specific topic. At this time, can we have Bruce Beriano, Marshall Hardy, John Faber? 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 So Jules Smith, Julia Howes, and Henry Mueller. And we will start with Mr. Beriano.
Ma'am, please let the President, John Faber.
Sir, certainly, that's fine.
So good evening, everybody. My name is John Faber. I live 1197 Gwen Avenue in Churchton, Maryland. I am a longtime, lifetime county resident and currently president of the Anarundel County Fair, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. As you know, the Anarundel County Fair sits on seventy-three acres owned by the state of Maryland, managed by the Department of Natural Resources, and leased to the Anarundel County Fair Incorporated. The county also owns three acres that are borders of property that we utilize. As such, we have enjoyed a good working relationship with the county and the state. Throughout the year, I have been involved with many events in the county, mostly involving the fair, but many outside of the fair, and I see the benefits of this legislation, but we do have a few concerns. We have worked with the Office of Emergency Services, the county police, and the fire department, and the health department on our past events. It's probably been going on two years we've worked with them, and it was great working with them, and I truly appreciate their input on our many events. And as such, many of our concerns have been addressed in the current version of the bill. As you know, the Anarundel County Fair hosts a few of our own fair-sponsored events, including the county fair, a rodeo, a Halloween event, holiday lights, flea market, and tractor pulls, and this year we'll have a Easter egg hunt event. All fair-sponsored events, and these events are handled by our all-volunteer membership. Along with the fair-sponsored events, we have other rentals throughout the year. It is these events, it's these diverse events that are well-attended by both county residents and visitors alike. It is these rentals that fund our fair-sponsored events. Without these rentals, we would have, be hard-pressed to have a quality fair that our county residents have come to expect and enjoy. We also allow many groups to use the fairgrounds, including dog training by the, by some first responders, overflow parking for neighbors and youth groups. While the Anarundel County Fair Board sees the value of the legislation for both the county fair and the county residents, we do still have a few remaining concerns. After speaking with some of the groups, or some of the folks that are involved with the process.
Sir, please summarize.
Well, we look forward to continuing to work with the county and to address any concerns that may be outlaying in the current version of the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Martin Hardy, 19 Howard Drive, Howard, Maryland. I'm the Vice President of Anarundel County Fairgrounds and also the Rental Chairperson for the fairgrounds. This year, we've got more than thirty events scheduled at the fairgrounds, everything from hot air balloons, Boy Scout camps, hot tub shows, and monster trucks. The main source of funding for the fair comes from the rentals that we're able to put on. So our concerns around the bill as it stands today are the vague wordings around things such as inadequate toilet facilities, inadequate refreshments. Those things are raising concerns with our renters, and they're not quite sure if they're going to be returning next year if this bill passes, because they can't really forecast what it's going to take to rectify inadequate toilet facilities, for instance. The fair sees this bill as something good, something that we really support. It just needs some amendments to clarify some of the wording in the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Beriano?
Good evening. For the record, Bruce Beriano, 720 Holly Drive, Napolis, Maryland, registered lobbyist with the county for the Anarundel Fair. We support this legislation with amendments. It's not a partisan bill. It's a bill of events and what's best for the county and for the public safety. We all want public safety, so I'm not talking a lot about that. I'm not dismissing it, but we all want public safety. But you're getting a lot of pious comments, but I beg you, read the bill. Read the bill. This is a very poorly drafted bill. I've given you each, I went through it meticulously. It's a one-sided bill. It's, it got lack of definitions. It says department, I don't know what department. It says county. You don't know who's going to be doing the regulating. It allows the county, and the county is, as said, they're going to have unfettered, unrestricted ability to cancel things when they decide, without any input from the vendor, from my clients. This bill as drafted is a trust-me bill. Well, we love you all, but words are important. You all are legislators, and it's not what's intended or what it's supposed to be. Words matter, because respectfully, you all are going to be in higher places someday. There's going to be another county executive someday, and this bill's going to be here. And we don't want to leave it to the whim of interpretation. We want the law to be clear and specific. I know there's a work session, time doesn't permit, but I just ask you, for your sake and for my client's sake, which has been a fair since 1952 and a staple in this county, please read the bill carefully. Please go over this document. If you disagree with me, let's talk about it. But I went through it meticulously, and this bill needs to be redrafted so it's clear and not left to what the county wants on a particular day or fashion. It's got to be balanced. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Howes?
My name is Julia Howes, resident of Churchton and President and CEO of the Southern Anarundel Chamber. We represent almost 200 members, 20% of which are nonprofit organizations. The chamber is a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit business. I am here today in opposition of this bill thirteen twenty-three as it's stated. While I understand the intent of this bill, there are many line items that cause concern to our chamber, our members, and our community. Page two, line thirty-three, fifty-plus people. Page two, line fifty-three states inside the venue. A lot of events in the community are held outside, especially after the COVID pandemic, which would restrict us. Page three, line twenty-one, sixty days. Other permits, including health department and liquor permits, do not require sixty-plus days' notice. Page three, line fifty-two, any other information as the county may require in its review of the applicant. There's no limit to what could be requested, causing financial and administrative burden. Page five, line ten, another event is already permitted, could cause our event permit denial. Page five, line fifty-one, the fee, some events are no cost, as stated in page two, line thirty-six, whether or not a mission is charged. So we're adding a fee to these nonprofit organizations in which they're not charging event admission fee or any kind of fees. Large events are usually for profit, and they aren't asked for the same process. So I'm just asking for more clarification. There is a lot of definitions in the bill that aren't clear, and then a lot of definitions that aren't stated, as Chairperson Volkey had stated earlier. So it just seems like a broad bill with a lot of points that are specific, but then not specific at the same time. So I just see this as more interpretation and more, to be led to who is reading it and reviewing it. I just think that there's a lot still to be done to this bill, and I look forward to working with all of you to make that change.
Thank you. Mr. Mueller?
The reason I'm here tonight, I'm Hank Mueller, CEO of Field of Treasure, a member of the South County Chamber of Commerce. We have a charitable organization helping families, caretakers, and volunteers in Southern Anarundel County. I serve as a substitute teacher and school bus driver right now due to the shortage of bus drivers. We need to get our kids to school, and I'm in. An example of, I agree with everything she said about the, about the bill as a member of our organization, and this is an example. Our organization is sponsoring a free Easter egg hunt in Shadyside at noon on April 8, 2023, on a limited budget. If this ordinance had been in effect, we would have had to pay $100 since we were late sixty days, within sixty days, to the county just for the permit. In addition to any cost, some nameless person in Napolis wanted to charge us for police and fire service. I've contacted the fire department, and they're going to be on-site demonstrating some vehicles, and also put a call into the, the community police representative. I haven't got a call back from him yet. Based on the average value of the home in South County, our underserved residents already pay more per capita in real estate taxes for those services than in many other areas of the county with better amenities. To tell you the truth, our organization could not have afforded those costs and would not be able to offer the free community event for our neighbors and children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. May? John May? Okay. Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. I think that's it, actually.
We haven't heard from Mr. Smith yet.
So I think, Mr. Smith? I think it's because I jumped around there, so I skipped you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Good evening. Jules Smith, 3890 Green Meadow Lane, Davidsonville, Maryland. I, along with four brothers and a sister, own and operate the Maryland Renaissance Festival. Four of us work full-time, along with six other men and women who work full-time. Seasonally, we hire 600 employees and 140 other businesses out at the festival, hire an additional 500 for 1,300 workers annually. In 1985, we were invited by Anarundel County to relocate the Renaissance Festival to their jurisdiction. We received zoning for one specific event for a specific timeframe and with specific facilities on a specific piece of ground. We already work closely with fire, police, public works, health, and any other department or agency that approaches us. What makes this bill a burden for the festival are the conditions with which the permit could not be issued, as the event is the only work and livelihood of the people who operate the facility every business day of the year. There's no remedy or appeal, as stated. In addition to the employees, eighteen charitable organizations raise more than 170,000 each year annually. Since the program's inception, 35 years ago, upwards of $3.4 million have been raised. Our property taxes are assessed commercially on the 25-acre festival grounds and the infrastructure year-round, and the agricultural fields are assessed commercially the 19 days of the festival. We are told this is modeled on a permitting process in Prince George's County or nearby counties, so I went to the website for Prince George County, and after the first application fee of $25, then there's a 12-page fee or application process. And for our event, it would be about 13,500 in additional fees for the permitting and inspection process. In summation, we're a year-round business with limited days of attendance, like a theater or stadium or arena that schedules three theatrical runs or eight games a year. We do not hold any other functions or events at the facility. Thank you. I love the Anarundel County Fair.
Thank you. We love it, too. Thank you all for speaking. Please, please return to your seat. We'll call the next set of folks who had signed up in advance. Mr.? Now, if I can get Mr. May, John May, if you want to come up. Ms. DuBois, Susan. Ms. Schultz, or Shoals. Sounds like, looks like Ms. Williams, and Lang. Commits, name and address for the record, and then two minutes.
Chairman Smith, and members of the council, my name is John May, 2420 Fox Creek Lane, Davidsonville, and I'm here today representing the Rotary Club of South Anarundel County. In this county, Rotary is a family of about 2,500.
In this county, Rotary is a family of about 2,500 members, volunteers, generous donors, and together we touch the lives of literally thousands of individuals and families across Anorundel County. Rotary strongly opposes Bill 13-23 as it's drafted. This bill is nothing more than a power grab for money, a scheme to tax nonprofits that would generate 100 to 150,000 dollars of annual revenue to the county through application fees and special service charges. Rotary Clubs in the county conduct fundraising special events and accepts donations, gifts that we transform into service projects that changes lives across the county bound by improving health, providing quality education, improving the environment and alleviating poverty. Rotary Clubs in the county work together to support education, especially early education and child development. Help homeless and low-income families and individuals by providing financial support for those struggling in the county to meet, uh, rent, utilities, groceries and other critical needs. A backpack program that sends young schoolchildren home on Fridays with backpacks of food intended to feed the entire family for the weekend. Save mothers and children, providing assistance to women recovering from substance abuse and their children and much more. 100% of every dollar that we raise by our fundraising special events goes into these program services. There are no administrative fees. The county should not tax the nonprofit organizations that provide these essential services. The county should thank them. Rotary strongly urges the county to vote no and defeat 1323 as written.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Boyce? Yep, there it's on.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Susan Grace Dubois and I reside at 309 Garden Gate Lane, Annapolis, Maryland, in Ward Five. Um, hello and thank you for your time. As stated, my name is Susan Grace Dubois and I'm a public school educator and a constituent who lives right here in downtown. I am here to discuss the current wording of Bill 1323. The premise behind this bill has a valuable heart in the area of making sure special events have enough services to be safely attended. However, I am concerned that the Maryland Renaissance Festival, operating in 1821 Crowesville Road in Annapolis, is not a name-excluded event on page two of the bill under the special events does not include section. The Renaissance Fair is in its 47th year of business. It already has a special exemptions permit and it pays an amusement tax fee on every ticket. It is not a temporary site. It is a business that although is only open to the public for 19 days, is a year-round endeavor where we are continually working on creating and maintaining our 16th century village theme. In addition, when the festival is open, the festival hires their own private police officers and medical teams, which is another reason that they should be a named exclusion to this bill. Now, you might wonder why that is important to me. It would not be an exaggeration to say that my incredible life in Annapolis is because I own a business at the Maryland Renaissance Festival. Rapunzel's Hair Braiding hires and trains local peoples from all walks of life. This year, my youngest staff member will be 16, the daughter of a hair braider, and my oldest staff member will turn 75 during the the season. The money these people make at the festival is what helps them support their lives in the great state of Maryland. This is my 21st first year working with the owners of the Maryland Renaissance Festival. In 2002, I had three people in my booth. In 2022, I had 36 people in my booths. That's a lot of local people and a lot of local money going into these homes. And for reference, those three people who started with me in 2002 are still working with me to this day. So I think that says a lot about the festival itself. There is a lot of homes touched by the opportunity that the Maryland Renaissance Festival has to provide. This bill is too broad in the language and should have the Maryland Renaissance Festival listed as an exempted special event. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Dubois. Thank you. Hope to visit your your hair booth someday. Ms. Schultz or Scholes?
Yes, my name's Dana Schultz. I live in Millersville, Maryland, District Six. And after submitting my written testimony, I read through the bill a little bit more closely. The definition of special event is an interpretation of any outside event, not inside a facility of 50 people or more. The bill requires residents to gain an expensive permit after going through a cumbersome process to hold outdoor, even family events such as graduation, large family barbecues, outdoor and home weddings. The cumbersome process and additional money is not achievable for all Marylanders. The verbiage on the first page implies that the sponsor will pay for police and parking and does not provide, uh, achievability for all Marylanders. Under the consideration on page four, lines 31 through 41, five, six, seven and eight. So my observation is that if a neighbor calls the police, the sponsor will pay for the police. If the neighbor says there's not enough parking, does um, does that mean that the sponsor has to pay the county? This is very vague. Inspections listed on page six are extremely intrusive and additional cumbersome requirements for residents. And I remember it was under the guise of safety that Anorundel County was locked down and we suffered and our students still have not recovered, exemplified from their test scores and the serious drop in academic achievement. So Marylanders and I will not forget. And as a combat veteran, I fought and my friends died for our freedoms and I take it very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, council members. Peggy Williams from Severna Park. Um, when I read this bill, I have concerns that this is an attack on citizens' First Amendment right to peaceably assemble and I can see this bill potentially disallowing one side and not the other. Any group with a permit should be allowed to assemble as long as they cause no damage or harm to anyone. Why is the bill necessary? If we are already paying taxes to support county resources, why is this not already covered by the taxes we pay? I have concerns that the language in this bill that would serve to either make impossible or try to delay or stymie the organizing of any event where the county execu- executives' office can drum up any violation or citation or limit participation based on a sponsor's previous event that did not agree with the forced narrative of the minority. This is another way to muzzle the silent majority. Any place of business that wants to hold a, an event that conflicts with the new normal will be intimidated into canceling the event. I've already seen it happen. If that doesn't work, then county officials will be there to find the loophole that the applicant then jump through to then disallow the event. I have concerns that the language in this bill will just facilitate more of this type of behavior, so I oppose this bill. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lang? Or Mr. Lang, I'm sorry.
Okay. My name's Alan Lang. I live in Pasadena, District Three. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about this. I I oppose the bill as written, but I believe it has some merit, but it needs to be reworked. We've already talked about some of the vague wordings and stuff. I was curious about the earlier presentation about no special event processing, the the board, the recreation and parks has extensive special events process for how to use the parks for fundraising, how to use trails for fundraising. By reading it, it looks like this bill is even modeled after, I don't understand why it's, it's stated we don't have this. Would these processes be deleted as a result of this bill? I'm concerned about definitions. Will athletics be included? I don't know what the phrase regularity or permanent means. Is that, would that exclude, uh, the team sports? Because 50 people just for practices, just for weekly games, is that going to require a permit, a $50 permit where right now permits don't cost anything? Uh, several groups run pre and postseason tournaments. Those would definitely be special events. I don't believe there's been any problem. I was associated with Mountain Road Stock for for many years. We've had tournaments and now there would be another special process. Looking at the background information, it looks like there would be some sort of interdepartmental group that would process this because this bill is silent as to who's actually going to administer it, whether it would be Rexson Parks or some other group. So groups that don't know anything about athletics may be controlling who gets the fields and and what sort of police or fire practices need to be there. Is there also, the definitions are very loose. Would, people have talked about it, home use, private property be subjected because of the definition about road use and parking? And can neighbors turn in people who are having and saying that they're permitless? Thank you for your consideration.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for speaking here today. Please return to your seats. Is there anyone in the audience, uh, who has not had an opportunity to sign up beforehand who wishes to speak, uh, on this bill? Please come up. We have room for six, um, uh, six members and then, uh, we'll keep going until everyone in the room has spoken. Sir, start to my right to you. Two minutes and.
Good evening, council, council members. My name is Joseph Larson. I live in Hanover, Maryland. Um, I am the president of the Anorundel County Volunteer Firefighters Association. With me this evening is some of our dedicated volunteer first responders. I'm testifying this evening in opposition to Bill 1323. My testimony will focus on two areas, the impact to the volunteer fire service and the two-year journey that it took to get here. This bill was writ, this bill as written would have a negative impact on nearly every public event, carnivals, parades, fundraisers, even our fire and life safety education, open houses, which would attract more than 50 people. This association has a, has had a contract with the Maryland Renaissance Festival for over 25 years, providing first aid services. This legislation would cause that to come to an end. The volunteer fire companies also support numerous community events, providing safety and first aid support, at times receiving donations for those events. That will also go away along with the relationships we have cultivated with the communities we serve and those that support us. The journey to get here, two years ago, we were told by the fire department administration that this legislation was coming and that it would take over our involvement with Renfest. When preparing for the 2022 season, the department demanded to review our and approve our contract with Renfest. We declined that request. Last year with legislation, when legislation was delayed because of election year, the fire department administration implemented a special events directive that impaired our ability to fulfill our contract. We were told that this was not the intent. Our members that usually participate backed out because of directive, but in spite of this directed, this, our dedicated volunteers stepped up to make it a success. I have heard testimony that has stated that is, that is what is intended and what is not intended with this bill, but the law is what is written, not what is intended. Next year or even next day, intentions can change and we are only left with what is written. I look forward to working with the county and stakeholders to ensure the volunteer fire departments are able to continue to be able to support our communities, but we do not support this bill as written at this time.
Thank you. Sir, please cite your name and address for the record. Two minutes.
Hi, my name is. I live at 300 Packard Avenue, Glenberry, Maryland, 21061. I've been a volunteer now for 22 years with the Anorundel County Volunteer Firefighters Association. I am currently the sergeant of arms on board of directors and I've been in that position for nine years. I have been involved with the Maryland Renaissance Festival going on 22 years, or I'm sorry, 12 years and have actually been in charge of it, overseeing it for the past nine years. Um, if this bill is is allowed to go forward and passed, uh, it's going to hurt the volunteers as in we will not be able to get out and see the community or be involved in the community. The the paid firefighters would go to the community events that are, um, that are approved and then the volunteers would be left standing on the sidelines. Uh, it's hard enough now to get the volunteers to come forward and and commit to some type of, uh, uh, riding, riding status and and getting new members coming in just because of all the stipulations that are put on us. Uh, as the president said, uh, two years ago, it was directed that the, uh, volun- the Anorundel County Fire Department would be involved in this. I sat with the chief and then this past year, uh, like I said, with the delay, uh, they did come down with a directive and the directive hurt our staffing to where some of our members actually had to get a 1099, uh, to cover the maximum days. Right now, we have six members per day that worked at EMS at the Renaissance Festival and they are dedicated riding, car-carrying EMT members. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
David Morseberger, uh, Davidsonville, Maryland. Um, I love the support here for the liberty and the fight for the freedom of the right to assembly. And you'll notice that was included in the original county charter and that was not included in this new update. Um, kind of, we must be authentic. This is not a streamlined process. A streamlined process, you streamline an existing process. This went from a simple, less than one-page process about a parade to a six-page, six-plus page process with significantly expanded scope. So this is not streamlining. Um, so it's not clear the problem. After the introduction, the working sessions that I watched online, um, reading the bill, I agree it's a balance, but we cannot give into the fear and the what-ifs, you know? It's getting bad. What if this happens? We just can't give in. And this is too subjective, as a couple of people have mentioned, for any administration, not just any administration going forward. We, it needs, if we're going to have it, it needs to be nailed down. And I have really two major concerns. One, it's going to disincentivize people from holding events when what we really need is more, um, community events right now. There's too much division and we need more events. And this will create a new class of criminal when, when there are really serious criminal issues to be addressed, which leads to, who has jurisdiction to enforce this? You know, are we going to have special event police? What is the penalty for holding a special event without going through, you know, this process? You know, also, and somebody else mentioned, this is really a hidden tax whose additional revenue is highlighted in the fiscal note. I mean, talks about 100,000, 150,000 and they even include the money paid to reimburse for the county services as revenue. I mean, that's not standard accounting principles. Here's an income, here's an expense, oh, but that's part of, you know, the revenue. There's not a re- so, I mean, that even shows it's a, to me, it's a kind of hidden tax that they're putting in there to show, look how great this is. It's $100,000. No, it's not great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you very much. Heather Bagnall, delegate for District 33(c) and also chair of the Anorundel County delegation, though I am here on my own accord. Um, I'll keep my comments brief. I really appreciate the, 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 the balance, the efforts to to balance public safety and public access. Um, and most of my concerns have already been raised. I think I probably heard from the same organizations that you have. Um, but there are a couple of things that just haven't been raised, one of which is just a clarifying amendment that that would clarify what the remedy process is if there is a denial or a modification of an application, uh, uh, for licensure. And the other is that there's, there doesn't appear to be a definition of venue within the bill, which impacts page four, uh, sorry, um, yes, page four, um, lines, uh, 30 to 56 because, uh, we have spelled out the, the inadequacies, um, that could result in a, in a denial. Um, but they're all tied to venue and we don't have a definition of venue, so we're not sure how that would impact outdoor events. So if we could, um, get some, some clarity on that, I, I really appreciate, uh, you giving me the opportunity to speak to the concerns that have been raised with my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Oh, we're just going left to right or my right to left?
Cedric Tolson, 219 Greenwood Court. Um, June 2nd, 2007, that was at Uni Fest downtown DC where a lady drove her car through the crowd and 30 people got injured. I understand the Renaissance Festival is concerned, I'm tired of hearing them. I think they need to be set to decide along with the state fair. They have set precedence that they can do it correctly, but these gentlemen that risked their lives are the ones that everybody's going to scream, well, where was the fire department? Where is the police? So I think it's a simple measure. You know what? Your business and you personally can accept liability if it's too much to pay an extra fee, which people are screaming about as the extra taxes when they're already underfunded as these departments. And when it comes point to where you look around and somebody's life, life is at risk and then we don't have enough officers there because somebody wants to argue over a few dollars here or there. But then when something happens, everybody that's standing up here, uh, these departments over here, everybody's going to say, well, where were the police? What did the district council do? What did this, this and that and the third, which makes no sense. I hear a whole bunch of crying, but then it's going to be crying and pointing fingers at these group of men right here. at these group of men right here, these men and women up here, when something happens. So what, what do we really want? This isn't an invasion of privacy. This is, yes, a public safety matter. We've had football games where kids got to fight, and basketball games, we've had all this. So yes, maybe a little bit of the language needs to be worked out. But if you're not going to accept liability, but then point fingers at these men and women, that's a piss poor, sad way to address this matter and this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Henley Bray, YVS Law, on behalf of Maryland Renaissance Festival. Thank you to everybody on this council and to the administration for the opportunity to talk with you individually and to testify tonight on behalf of the Ren Fest. The festival was established in 1985, and unlike any other festival in the county, it operates under a special exception, which is a land use approval that runs with the land. And while the festival's owners and artisans work on the premises all year round, the special exception permits only 19 public days per year. These days of operation, though, because they are not regular and permanent throughout the year, render the Ren Fest a special event. The 19 days, though, are a baseline. They're not unknown. They can be calendared from here until perpetuity, because they're governed by the special exception. So unlike tempor, other temporary uses like carnivals and fairs that may or, not necessarily the Anarone County Fair, but other carnivals and special events happening on private property throughout the county, the Renaissance Festival is, is sort of a baseline condition for the months of August, September, and October, and are entitled to operate during those times. But this bill would apply to them as well. The administration has assured our client that the festival's a good operator and not the type of problematic or surprise event that they're trying to regulate. But a simple way to show that is by exempting the Renaissance Festival or other events authorized by special exception from the bill. This bill as written would create a race to the permitting office by allowing the denial of a permit if there's an application for the same date, and someone determines there are not adequate resources to service both events. But even if the Renaissance Festival were the first to the permit office, the county, under the way the bill is drafted, would not be required to grant the permit until 14 days prior to the opening day. It's extremely problematic for a business that is spending millions of dollars in expectation that they will be able to open on their public weekends. The bill doesn't create any objective standards against which to determine whether there are problems with an application or sufficient resources. There's no measuring stick against which to judge sufficient or standard services. We have a long history of working with the county. We look forward to working with you to amend this bill to create that balance between public safety and the interest of business owners in Anarone County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for testifying. Please be seated. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill 1323? Please come forward. We have room for six individuals. Okay. This is, this is the last call for 1323. Ma'am, please state your name and address for the record, and then two minutes.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Chris Rong. I live at 851 Buckingham Cove Road in Severna Park. I oppose Bill 1323 as it is written. The rigid requirements of this bill are unwarranted and extreme. There is simply no viable reason for this bill as it is written, which would require a permit for any outdoor gathering of 50 or more people in the county. If, in fact, the ordinance was written to address safety issues of an incident that occurred at Anarone County Fairgrounds, why wasn't it written accordingly? And as we heard, the county fair leaders all spoke here asking for clarifying language of the, of the legislation. In the language of 1323, "A very modest-sized gathering at one's private home or other private property, at a church or on the property owned by a church or synagogue, or a parade on closed-off streets, or county property like Kinder Farm Park, or other private or county property for a club, baseball, soccer, or lacrosse practice or game, would all require notice 60 days in advance." You all are fairly young. I think you probably know when your kids are out there on a field and, and they get rained out or the other team doesn't show, you have to reschedule. All that's going to have to go through the county. Myself and thousands of other Anarone County citizens are quite tired of the oppressive and overbearing policies we endured in the last three years. This proposal is unwarranted and extreme and should be unanimously voted down.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Chairman and Council, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Bruce Ballantyne, and I live at 1709 Fox Grape Lane in Annapolis. And I'd like to speak to a couple of items here I think that's important for us to undersi, understand a little bit of what's the size of this and what is the cause, so we can make a good judgment. And I think that prior to any effective discussion of the bill, to permit efficient and effective reviews and discussions, we ought to have some of those facts in front of us, instead of anecdotal incidences and generalities. One would be questions to be answered before we get into good discussion is, what's, can you provide and distribute the current list of all anticipated required organizational events? So we've had some subjects and some categories, but the, I think it's important that we understand what those are, as of right now. It may change. What's the maximum number of those anticipated events a year? Is it 5,000, 25,000, 13? If you're talking about the Renaissance Festival, it's a big one. It's different than events that will occur pretty much spontaneously, either in a sporting event situation or other events. So what's the magnitude of those? In the past 12 months, how many of those types of events required applicable public service? So if there's 30,000 of these, and five of them required police or emergency police support, what are those quantums, so that you can know how big the animal is? What are those percents of, out of those total population, how many required it? Not that there's somebody there in case, but actually caused it. What's the cost of those? The conduct of the reviews and approval, communication efforts by the county? What's the estimated number of man-hours per year and cost? Provide the quantified decision matrix that would be used to decide yes or no. This is an increased cost to the constituents of all the county here, whether it's paid by the Lions Club, constituents, your constituents would be paying this. And I believe that it really is an infringement on the right to assemble as a tax, almost like the poll tax was for elections. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. Please be seated. The public hearing on Bill Number 1323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1323.
Bill Number 1323: An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Special Events Permitting.
Right. Mr. Barron, a couple of things. Obviously, with, with public testimony, Ren Fest, how, how does this impact Renaissance Festival? This bill, would they be required to submit a process or a permit for their events for the 19 days that they're in session, if you will?
As the bill is drafted, yes. They, it is our understanding that the Ren Fest would have to apply for a special event permit.
Check.
And that permit, they would have to provide information around their life safety plans. And they, the one thing I did hear in that, in that testimony that I do want to clarify, there is nothing in this bill that would require any private event to utilize county services. They could contract with a volunteer fire department as they are.
So has the volunteer firefighter been asked to, to not, may I have your testimony to that? Has there been a request to them to not provide those services in the future, or something like that?
I'm going to let the fire department answer that one.
No, absolutely not. And in fact, every, every special event that we're asked to staff, if, if the request is for an EMT or a basic life support unit, the very first call that I put out is to the volunteers. They get the first stab at, at all those events. And in fairness, a lot of them are weekend hours, difficult to fill. And I think in the last two years, we get about 50%, 60% of the time, they'll pop in and take those events, and will make up for the 40. The only requirement is that because all apparatus in the county is paid for, I'm sorry, is insured by the county, maintained by the county, fueled by the county, that, that all of the resources have to be approved by the fire chief to be used. In other words, if, if there were a lot of things going on on a beautiful June weekend, and, and everybody just took and went to different events, well, then we wouldn't have any resources. So it, it is open to all, without question.
And, and quickly, with the, the contract specifically, is there any direction from the fire department to?
No.
To not support a, a contract with the volunteers in Ren Fest?
No, so it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a tricky one. So I worked with Mr. Smith, and again, I think it's fair to point out whether it's the Ren Fest, Mr. Smith and his team, or the folks from the, the county fair, they're, they're the ones that, that do it right, right? They're the ones that are, that are taking the responsibility, coordinating their efforts with us, working with us to get the right resources there. But in that particular case, I, I worked with him to meet with, with the Volunteer Association to work out one portion of the EMS plan there, which is staffing the first aid room. As far as the contract, the cost, quite honestly, it's, 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 it's not necessarily anything that I get involved in. There, there's some, you know, there's some technicalities to that, because much of the equipment used is already funded by the county and paid for by the taxpayer. So generally, I, I make the introduction. I allow them to work out the details of a donation or something like that, without getting involved in that.
Check.
Yes, sir.
And, and Mr. Barron, your, your process with the, they're not even thinking about the appeals. If you can speak to that, is there an appeal process? I mean, obviously, I read the bill, and I didn't see it, but process, so if you, if the county denies an application, one, is there an appeals process? And I think the question from the audience, what happens after that, is very sort of pertinent.
So the intention of the bill is to allow a dialogue between the event permit applicant and the county to ensure that there is adequate life safety? I'm going to let Ms. Emmerich speak to exactly how that would go through.
And what we do right now is that dialogue and the collaboration, we ensure to understand their needs and make sure we have that back and forth before it ever gets to that point. We have several meetings with the fairgrounds, with some of the sponsors that come to the fairgrounds to have these events, and we do walkthroughs with them. We have many meetings with them to make sure that we both reach an understanding of some of the requirements.
Got it. But just like if, if I build a house and I do something wrong, and the county cites me, we have Board of Appeals that acts as a quasi-judicial body. There's a mechanism that if the county says no, that a citizen has the right, has a method to appeal. Like, if you say no, is there an appeals process?
So in terms to give them a chance to correct?
Yeah. If you say no to the application, did they submit it, and you weren't happy with the, I guess, the substance of the application? And, and/or it was another event scheduled at the same day that was also... And you, you deny the application after you've exhausted all of your, the, the back and forth, and, and you get to the answer of no, is there a mechanism to, to appeal that process?
And I think in terms of, I, I want to kind of distinguish it between building a house and having it end there, rather than telling the applicant, can you pick another day? And so I, I guess I just, I see the distinction of, the decision is not one that has to go through an appeals process, have like a board, Board of Appeals sit down and determine that. I see it more as a dialogue, and that's how we've been operating.
Check. Okay. No, I'm not, it's just...
No, 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 no.
I want to put this out for the public.
No, no, no. And I understand that. And I'm trying to, I think, describe with the best of our capabilities what we have done so far and what we want to continue.
Yeah. And the 60 days, what, what is a standard? That was interesting, that, like, if, if somebody's doing an event or a liquor license, most organizations do have, what, why did 60 days become the number?
So I think, and I'll, I'll let the, the professionals speak, there needs to be enough time for the county public safety agencies to have awareness of what's going on and make sure we have the adequate staffing. I do want to clear up, though, some of the, the conversation around, when the, the application comes in, the county has 30 days to respond to grant, approve, or, or deny or request modification. And we have to do that and complete that whole process by at least 14 days before the event. The, the idea here would be that, you know, the county has to respond very quickly to an application within 30 days. Most of the, the events that you have heard about would be worked out by those 30 days. The, the 14-day sort of drop deadline is to ensure that we have adequate staffing, because our public safety agencies need to schedule people to be in. So that's why you have those two, two dates there. And I'll, I'll ask if anybody else has anything to add to that.
I think I saw Mr. Volkey, I think, initially light up first.
I tried to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to start, I want to go back to the beginning a little bit, because some of the comments from folks were enlightening on people asking the question, is this, in fact, a solution to searching for a problem? I think is the way I would classify it. And with that, I've heard, one person referred to it as anecdotal evidence. I'm not going to be pedantic and sort of put it down. But what specifically are you seeing that is causing this? What, what in terms of resourcing, in terms of issues that have arisen in the county in the last few years have caused this group to come here and say, these are problems, these are the reasons why we need this, and this is how this bill solves it? I think some of that background may be helpful for us as policymakers, but also for the public to understand what's going on here.
I'll let Chief Schultz, sir, speak to the fire department's historical reference points. But on a police department's perspective, we average about 150 to 200 of these special events a year, which are already managed currently through a parade permitting process when roads are being shut down and things such as that. What we don't have control over is when we have events such as large concerts and things like that, that may show up at, at a venue such as the fairgrounds, where we will get a short notice, and that happened at least twice last season. And Mr. Faber and his crew were, were very accommodating with us to work on those events. But had they not been accommodating to the police department, the only mechanism we would have had to stop that event was to try to get a court injunction, because there is no permitting process in place to stop that type of event from happening. So it's not 30,000 events that we have from the police department's side. We don't foresee a massive increase in these types of events, because they're already, the large majority of them are already controlled through the parade permitting process. It's the larger events that don't shut the roadway down, but we have them at an event, like at a park, at a event such as the fairgrounds, where, not the fairgrounds per se, but the vendor who is hosting the events, such as the example being the Let's Go Music Festival is coming in June. We've had numerous meetings with the promoters, and they've been very accommodating. We have a, a very good security and traffic plan set up for that event based on prior events at the fairgrounds. But once again, they are under no obligation to come to the police department and say, we're having this event. They could have just held that concert, multi-day event, with, you know, 5,000 to 7,000 people attending it, and there is no mechanism to control that. So I think that's, at least from the police department's perspective, it's really just to get a control of that, so that when we have, per se, on a Fourth of July weekend, when their staffing, our issues are ready for an understaffed police department, that we can adequately and safely staff these events, where it's not having the impact on our regular delivery of police services. Because I think that's what sometimes gets lost in the discussion, too, is if we can't get off-duty officers to willing to work the event as secondary employment, and we have one of these events come in that require 10, 15 police officers, we would not be able to staff that event, and we would be drawing from county resources for the incidents that may happen at these events. And when you start adding alcohol to events such as concerts and things that, that we've seen, there is a demand on, on police services, where there's calls for services such as fighting, drunkenness, and things such as that, that require a response, that right now, we don't have to send police officers to that, because we have dedicated officers, whether they're assigned as overtime duty or they're assigned as secondary employment.
Madam Vice Chair? Ms. Pickert?
Yes, thank you.
If, sorry, Ms. Pickard.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna make sure that the fire department had a chance to speak on that question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 no worries. Um, so, yes, uh, and the, the number of events that, that we deal with in resourcing is, is smaller than, than what the police department does. We're probably resourcing thirty to thirty-five events a year. I can assure you, we're, we're gonna be at every Easter egg hunt, uh, in the next month. You will, you will see a fire truck there, and you will see lots of, lots of happy people running around. That's, that's not where our problem lies. Today is a good example, uh, in the last two days. Uh, I gotta request the staff a rodeo. Um, the rodeo is an event at the fairgrounds. Uh, we worked with them last year. They're great, uh, to work with. It's a, it's a fun night out. Uh, it's a smaller crowd, uh, from the, from best practices in special event management. Doesn't really require any resources from firing EMS, but there's concerns there because the level of activity. So, we provide them with a, a, a BLS, a Basic Life Support, uh, unit, and we, we will again. Uh, this year, they've asked for a, a, a paramedic unit, uh, because the rodeo riders require that level of service. And of course, we'll do what we've done, uh, with every single special event over the last three years, which is to find a way to get somebody there. That's, that's easier said than done, but we do it. I, I think you would be hard-pressed to have anybody come up and say, we've asked for support and didn't get it. So, the question is, is really, really appropriate that you ask, what is it that makes it challenging? I also got one, uh, this morning from a, a military, uh, benevolent association, which does incredible work for our veterans. Um, the, the ones that, that tug at the heartstrings, probably twenty-five or less people, but they're gonna be out swimming in the bay. And that's gonna require the requests for our dive rescue team and a fireboat, right? It's, it's, it's as noble a request as you're gonna get, and we're gonna find a way to go out there and make it happen. But that's just an example of the last two days. I'll have more on my desk tomorrow, and it'll continue to come in. The folks you heard from, as I said, are great because they come to the table and they sit with us. They ask us what we need, and to, to Pretty's point, uh, about the appeal is, we, we've always gotten to a yes. We've gotten to a yes with everybody. We, we've never had a no situation, and so her example, uh, I think is apropos in that we, being able to meet with them is always towards getting to a yes. Just needs a little bit of coordination, a little bit of give and take.
Thank you. Uh, please, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just also wanted to add that when we look at large public events or events that are public gatherings where a lot of people are coming there, there is always the very real threat that it becomes a soft target for an active assailant event. So, on the police department's side, we have to always be mindful that those threats are not often gonna be known. It's not the, uh, we're crying wolf or some type of threat. We've already had an active shooter incident happen in this county where five people tragically lost their lives. So, it's very important that we recognize that these events, when we have lots of people gathering at a location, it's very important that the police department has awareness, number one, that they're happening, and that we can ade- adequately staff it or patrol it to prevent that ungodly event that could happen with an active assailant event.
Thank you. And if you need more fire trucks, there's a gentleman by the name of John Hammond, who would be delighted to drive his fire truck. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to, to, um, to, to clarify for folks that have testified and are here, um, can the, someone at the table maybe assure folks that this is not about, um, soccer practice? Um, and also, um, I just wanted to add a thank you. We, I, I do believe it's time for Anarondale County to be proactive in policymaking, um, so that we aren't in the news, making national news about a severe safety issue, um, or breach, um, in our county. We're, we've already had one, um, and we don't need to see that again. So, I know this is, the legalese is complicated, but I think if we look on page two, there's some ways that you can see how this isn't for your Christmas party at home or soccer practice. So, I just, I think it would assure folks in the audience if we could tackle that.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. I, I would, um, point the, the audience directly to line thirty-six through, uh, on page two, line thirty-six through, uh, the top of page three, line two. You have to read that entirety. Um, and so, i- i- this would, this would not affect a, a, a normal soccer practice. However, if there was a large sports tournament that was in the county where there would be an additional demand on county services, road closures and the like, then that could fall under that definition. But a normal, you know, Thursday night soccer practice, no. A, you know, gathering of seventy-five people at a private residence for somebody's birthday party, no. A five-thousand-person gathering at a large event space, yes. So, I, I encourage everybody to read that whole section.
Ms. Ledbetter, and then I'm gonna work my way this way.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on, uh, Mr. Smith's questions about the, um, appeal process. I think where possibly folks are concerned about being able to have that appeal process is, I'm sorry, I'm actually borrowing glasses tonight, so this is throwing me. Um, I feel- looking at page five, line nineteen, the authority to deny-
Can, can you turn your mic? There you go.
I didn't realize I hit it. Thank you. Um, so, uh, line nineteen on page five, it's letter C, the authority to deny, modify, or cancel, reads, the county may deny, modify, or cancel a permit at any time when the denial, modification, or cancellation is required, and it goes on to list. But I, my understanding is that most likely folks are concerned about having a formal appeal process because this actually uses the formal words of deny, modify, or cancel. If this language reflected more of a, hey, we're gonna go back and forth with you until the problems listed below are resolved, I don't know that people would be asking for an appeal process, but that language, it, letter C, is very, very specific. Um, so if you have any thoughts on that, I would be very interested to hear.
So, I actually, I'm not a great lawyer, so I'm gonna ask the person at the end of the table to, to weigh in on this, but I believe that, thinking about this a little more, that if there was a dispute, that somebody was denied a permit, county said, no, you can't proceed with your event, I think you could go to the Board of Appeals. Is that correct?
Yes, Ethan Hunt, Assistant County Attorney. Um, any permit that's denied can go to the Board of Appeals. Um, I'm just, under the authority to deny, modify, or cancel, one of the items is because the sponsor is failing to comply with county, state, or federal laws. I don't know how you appeal that. Um, number three, because the sponsor does not have the legal authority or permission of the owner to use the property upon which the special event is located. I don't know how you appeal not having the legal authority from the owner. Um, but number one is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, for the participants in the special event, and that language is pulled from the Express Powers Act and state law.
Thank you. Um, do you mind if, it's not a follow-up? It's an additional question? Want me to get back in line, or?
No, no, thanks. I'm working my way.
Um, so, following up on, uh, Mr. Barron, something that you just mentioned, you were describing the different types of events that this may or may not apply to, and I think one area that I have heard from, um, some business owners in the past twenty-four hours about is, say, you are a private business, you have an indoor and outdoor space, it's a gathering, we'll call it an anniversary party, a grand opening, um, a sale, um, and you have people inside and outside because that's just the way folks decide to gather. I think there's some fear that a situation like that, because it's over fifty people, because it's not just inside, and it's very explicit, it says an event held inside. Um, I think that is where there's some concern. Um, is there a reason why the word inside was chosen versus, you know, at these facilities?
So, I, oh, yeah. So, I, I guess you're referring to an event, an event held inside a theater, church, school, assembly hall, arena, social hall, government facility? Is that the language you're referring to, just for clarification?
Correct, yeah, and then wedding venue, uh, restaurant, some restaurants have indoor and outdoor space, um, conference centers might have indoor and outdoor spaces, churches have indoor and outdoor spaces, schools, indoor and outdoor spaces, and so I just, just wanted to clarify that inside versus, I think that's just, I think it's getting in folks' you know, minds as a problem word. Um, and so, just curious why that was chosen versus a different word to describe those locations.
I think there was a recognition, and also my public safety folks, um, would wanna comment on that, that facilities that are meant to hold people and fire, the already established, uh, fire safety codes of the maximum number of people inside, uh, we were wanting to be mindful of that. Um, and the example you used of, like, a store opening, right? A half inside, half outside, again, just to read the language in terms of, even if it's outside, there are specific, um, those three, um, conditions, um, one of them which you would have to meet. Um, so that's where the determination came from, but, oh.
Yeah, yeah, Pretty is exactly right. So, when it comes to public safety, specifically with, with fire life safety, uh, inside events or, or in buildings that have already been or met the requirements for capacity limitations, square foot, number of square foot per people, number of exits, fire protection systems in the cooking, et cetera.
Thank you for clarifying, it's helpful.
Thank you. Um, I guess this is probably a question for Office of Law. If an event promoter were holding, say, a concert that had five thousand people and they hadn't gone through this process, who would be ultimately, I mean, assuming this, a- a- as the law currently stands, not with this bill in place, who would be the party responsible for, um, for any, you know, for, for any, um, injury that occurred because of the lack of, um, fire, police, other emergency management, medical? Who would be resp- would that fall on the event promoter?
I believe in most circumstances, yes, or whoever is the property owner.
And are there already, are there already, um, standards laid out for, you know, say, I don't know, you need, uh, I, I'm just making up numbers because I have no idea what the correct ones are, but let's say you need ten porta-potties for every five hundred people. Um, so if you have five thousand people, you're gonna, I know that's probably way too many. Somebody in here probably actually knows the answer to this. Are there standards, um, specific standards in terms of, you know, how many ambulances you ought to have on standby for number of people, how many porta-potties for number of people, how many extra police officers do you need if alcohol is involved, et cetera, et cetera?
Man, there, there, there's, there's, uh, numerous best practices, the Association of Special Event Managers, um, the, if, if you focus on mass gatherings, uh, the World Health, uh, Office, uh, has really very closely aligned standards for, um, the number of porta-potties, trash cans, uh, EMS support, um, security, uh, there, there, there are many different, those are just a couple that, that come to my mind, um, that, that have reasonable numbers to address that are really pretty clearly aligned against the industry to the point that if, if somebody's looking for clarity of what they need, it's, it's not gonna be hard to reach for most of those things.
Okay, 'cause I think that those very specific details, or even if it were like in a separate, you know, if, I don't know if there's like some sort of manual that, you know, either exists or could be created to outline these things, maybe compiled from the different departments to give real specificity of when you say, 'cause I, I, this is a concern that I've heard, and, and I understand, um, you know, this is on page four, um, line thirty-five, there are inadequate traffic facilities to accommodate the anticipated number of spectators or participants. So, at some point in granting the permit, someone is gonna have to figure out what is the adequate facilities, and I'm assuming, like you said, there's some standard out there already. You're not just, you know, you, you have experience, but you're probably not just making it up on the fly. You're probably gonna say, oh, this many people, this is what is gonna be needed. So, I feel like that would go along, incorporating specific standards would go a long way towards giving comfort to the, um, event promoters. Um, so that's, you know, if there's a way that that could be, I, I will, you know, if that's something folks are interested in and we could look at that, but that obviously is gonna require some more work on your end to actually create some sort of event manual that lays these various pieces out.
So, I will say, there's a couple of different things, I think, can be addressed. Number one, um, in terms of the matrix, that was provided in terms of the level of staffing versus, you know, the crowd, um, attendance, um, I think that'd probably help clarify. Um, number two, um, in the special event work groups that, um, will be created for this, we could set a s- we set a s- we set a standard, right, of what needs to be done. But third, I just wanna emphasize that, um, this permit is new, but there is a history of the Health Department, the liquor license, recs and parks, I think a few others have mentioned it, already having standards that will still come into play here. Um, the portal that is set up, um, assigns, um, depending on what your event will hold in terms of attendance, et cetera, will be assigned to those departments that will follow the regular process in terms of road closures, um, number of porta-potties, um, or the Fire Marshal's Office in terms of there's tents set up, if it's heated tents, et cetera. Um, so a lot of this is already in place, um, and in terms of the public safety, that's kind of the wraparound that we're looking for, um, to make it complete.
Okay.
And police or fire.
Just to comment on the, the staffing question that you had, um, every event is reviewed through our intelligence unit to determine the potential threats and risks. It's a risk assessment process that we use that's based off of standardized risk assessment on best practices for police through IACP and other organizations, as well as DHS and FEMA for managing these types of large special events. Some of them can rise to the level where we need to put specialized assets such as tactical assets, air assets, canine assets. So, every event is different, but we do use standardized formats to determine the amount of personnel and the types of resources from the police side that are needed at these events.
Okay, that's helpful to know, and I'm sorry, if it's okay, I have a couple follow-up questions. Mr., okay, you're good. Mr. Chair is not, okay. Um, yeah, so, if, with that set of standards, if you, um, gave the exact same event to a group that was going to use those standards to analyze the needs for that event to Group A, and another, you have Group B, who's also going to analyze the needs, um, you know, the public safety, all the various needs, would they, are the standards clear enough that those two entities would reach the same conclusion, or is there gray area?
I'll let, uh, there we go. I'll let Chief Schultz comment also on this because we, we kinda coexist on these things, is, it, we try to analyze the event in its whole sense. It, a five-hundred-person event compared to a five-thousand-person event, it's not just the crowd size, it's the type of event that's actually occurring, and when you add factors such as use of alcohol, live entertainment, things such as that, on the police side, that creates additional security concerns. A five-hundred-person event, probably not a major traffic issue, but adding alcohol, live music, things such as that, an event that we know from intelligence, there's been previous violence that's happened at, we need to maybe assign more res- we know we need to assign more resources from the police side. A five-thousand-person event that's a strawberry festival, that is not gonna be that type of event, we would not need to assign three hundred police officers, but we still may potentially have traffic issues. So, I think there's always that balance of what is the type of event, and that's what we analyze off of best practices and risk assessment on the police side. I'll let the chief comment on the fire side.
Yeah, same thing, our, our, you know, I would, I would say our normal thresholds for having an EMS unit in an event doesn't even start until you- doesn't even start until you hit about twenty-five hundred people. Now again, uh, here's, here's some real disparities that kind of go into it, the consideration. Uh, it was um, uh, August of last year where in a single day we, uh, the county hosted the um, uh, Asian Cultural Festival, uh, the African Cultural Festival, the Seafood Festival, uh, the Hispanic Health Fair, all with various different numbers. So if you went to the health fair, there was, there was probably fifteen hundred people there. But, but they were measuring uh, blood glucose, they were, they were doing EKGs, they were doing really good health exams. And so the real potential for something to be wrong. It wasn't a large crowd, it was primarily indoor, but because of the type of activity, we, we needed to put an EMS unit there. Uh, the African American Festival was at Laurel Racetrack. It was outside. It was um, uh, at, at least a good portion outside, a very hot day. Uh, the, the demographics of age were really elderly, uh, adults there. Wasn't a super large crowd. I don't know that it reached nine, nine hundred or a thousand that day. But we had two units there and we used every bit of those two units. So that's kind of the idea. There are some benchmarks at twenty-five hundred, it's going to, it's, it's going to start to uh, have us put eyes on it, but then there's smaller level ones that have a, an exceptional risk. And there's bigger ones where we feel comfortable saying, it's, it's kids, they're, they're young kids, they're out, it's a big uh, field that they're doing their activity and there's not a lot of risk there. So maybe we don't need to have anything there.
I've got one last follow-up question, then I promise I'll let my, my colleagues go. If this, and this is just hypothetically, and um, you know, again, I said at the beginning that I'm looking for the right balance. If this bill were all about entities and organizers providing notice and providing adequate notice in whatever timeframe that needed to be, but not um, with the possibility of the county saying, no, we're going to shut this down, would that, how much of your need would be satisfied by a bill that simply required notice? And notice with some detail. This is um, the number of people anticipated. This is, um, you know, we are serving alcohol, we are not serving alcohol. Um, it's going to be during the daytime when the sun is, you know, providing different age, this is our expected demographic. With those kind of details, if it were just notice, um, how, w- would that get us to the same place? Or how far off would it be if it didn't?
So I'll take a stab and then I'll, I'll hand it over to professionals. Notice is, is very important and it's a key for our situation awareness, but it is not the be all, end all. The, the public safety professionals are going to need to manage resources. They're going to need to know what resources the organizers are, are bringing to bear. And they might not always be seeing eye to eye on what is the right level of public safety, uh, resources there. And I will also add, just in terms of, that would work for everybody if everybody always followed the rules, right? But just asking for notice is, is great. But what is the, the enforcement mechanism for the county for somebody who is saying, well, I've given you notice, I'm having two hun- twenty-five hundred people here, and we don't need any EMS there, but it's actually a, a rodeo, I'll use that example, right? So how does that get handled? So um, and now I'll hand it over to the real professionals.
And I'm assuming just for clarification, your question meant that they didn't have to get a permit, right? Maybe it was just a notification form that went through.
Correct. I think the biggest, the biggest fear I'm hearing from um, folks that have testified is that they would go through the process and still be turned down because there are things that are just ambiguous and they don't know how to follow them. Or that, you know, a future administration um, might, you know, lean really hard on one of the you know, requirements that has a lot of ambiguity. And, you know, they, that's why I'm looking for standards, looking for clarity, looking for ways to ensure that someone can meet this and that there isn't gray area. Because I feel like that's what's making folks nervous. Is that there's gray area, they don't know how to meet it, or they do everything right and there's, they're the last one who filed for a permit and there's already multiple, you know, uh, five thousand person events. And so they're the last one on the list. And so they're like, well, sorry, we already have our resources allocated here. We're going to have to shut you down for that day or those days.
And, and, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say, i- in that situation, it would be very unfortunate for them. But in your example, you would have a five thousand person event where the county doesn't have adequate resources if something went wrong. So I think that is the balance on the other side of that comment. I'll, I'll hand it over to Preity.
So just to address, um, I guess your earlier question and then the, the second concern, we have worked with sponsors who have been non-responsive, right? So even that notice, if we, um, first of all, there's no guarantee there would be notice. Second of all, um, we do have, in, in my statement, s- since the pandemic, a lot of events, people want to go out, and we want to encourage them to go out. But there are new sponsors who don't understand the aspects of planning. And it comes down to the last minute of, wait, I needed this, maybe I needed that, and they're not sure. So even giving us notice and saying, we have X, Y, Z, maybe X, Y, Z is not enough, maybe you need a Y, right? So we just want to make sure all those things are in place. And in terms of the resources, we did have that situation, as Chief Schultz said, in those festivals. We had five to nine festivals on that one day, and it really did strain our resources. Now, in terms of your example of if somebody doing everything right and being denied a permit, they don't have to use county resources, right? They could use the private vendors, uh, if their event is large enough and needs that kind of EMS, security, et cetera. But when it comes to using the county resources, it, police couldn't get enough staffing for that day. It was very difficult. A lot of EMS units that serve your communities were at events. We really want to make sure we have that balance that they could properly do their job, but also staff the awesome events that are in Anorundal County.
Yeah, and Preity's point, not, not some of the resources, every single one of them that day was an in-service unit. They, that's, that was, that was the way we staff it. And that kind of leads to the second point for, for, for any of our residents that are concerned about not having their events, being able to get them or to be able to be res- resourced, I, I would never be as bold as to, 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 to s- to say this, but there, there's not a single event, uh, that anybody's requested our services. And again, I'll speak for the Fire Department, but I know, uh, the Police Department's the same, uh, that, that didn't get them in the last two years at, at sometimes at great cost and sometimes at great strain. Um, but, but we always ended with a yes.
Could I ask one last follow-up? I'm sorry. I think it's a good one, it'll be worth your while. If, if an event promoter could indeed uh, show that they were providing all of those services themselves, and, and the county said, look, we are tapped out, but that promoter could provide those, you know, the needed, what the county deems necessary, they con- confirmed that they could provide those for themselves without using county resources, is there a way that we could get them to, we're not going to deny your permit if you can meet all these steps and show that you can get those resources yourself? I feel like even that would get some comfort.
I, I mean, I think that was the intention of our draft under page four, line sixteen, under issuance, "The county shall issue a permit unless," and we articulate a number of, of, of rationales here. So on those, in that example, the promoter has provided the adequate um, public safety, sanitation, what have you, the county shall issue that permit. I mean, we, we didn't say may, we said shall for a reason. So.
In the right, the right page.
Page four, page four, line sixteen. I- if, you know, so I think that, like, the county is, at least in our, in our, the administration's draft was intending to get to that very reassurance. Uh, I mean, I think there are some folks that, that are still concerned and understandably so. Uh, but the way we drafted this bill was deliberate in, in, in using that language.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
It does. I mean, I think there's still some ambiguity that are going to make folks feel like, I, I don't remember where I read it, but um, you know, mismanagement or something like that is in here somewhere and I can't find the line.
Ju- just to follow up to you on the question of if the vendor, the promoter can adequately staff that on the police side as far as security. W- we try our best to manage these events through a combination of private security that's licensed and the fairgrounds is very good with that, along with off-duty officers, so it's not creating a burden on the Police Department's actual resources. But an important distinction on the police side is we have to review this so that we have officers that are working the event that have jurisdiction in Anorundal County. Because a, a vendor or promoter can say, I'm going to bring in forty officers from Prince George's County, just as an example, but they do not have lawful jurisdiction unless there's some type of a major felony, violent act that happens in front of them, and then they have to call us anyway to handle the incident and summons them as witnesses per policy. So that creates kind of a unique situation with the police where we have to make sure that it's the Police Departments, i.e. the Sheriff's Department, State Police, Anorundal County Police that have actual lawful jurisdiction in the entire county. So that's just an important little nuance. So we have to review that to make sure that that's in place.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, okay. So I was going to ask some questions about this, actually. Let me do another question. So on page four, um, thank you for referencing that, Mr. Barron. Number ten, insufficient or substandard refreshment facilities. It, refreshment facilities, is that defined in the code? And if not, can I assume that that's wa- water or?
Yeah, we intended it to be water, right? Yeah.
I think, um, there have been incidents where there's hot water. I mean, sorry, hot weather, it's not a day. Hot weather, not enough water, people got dehydrated, people faint, need EMS services.
Okay. Is there a reason you couldn't just say water?
Doesn't sound fancy enough.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm asking these questions because I think to the point of some of the testimony this evening, when a vendor is looking or a contractor is looking at renting a facility, they look through all of this and alarm bells start to go off because we are talking about tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars invested with a fourteen day out from event answer. And this certainly gives pause, and I, I appreciate those comments. I, I want to switch gears a little bit here and ask for, if I, if I have a farm or agricultural heritage site or I have a parade that I do regularly, do I have to do the farmer agricultural heritage site application and/or the parade application? And now this application, I just want to understand if one larger event application would cancel out the others?
So depending on the unique circumstances of that example, if I'm following it correctly, i- if you have a, a current agricultural heritage area permit and you're doing a special event, would you still need to get the special event permit?
As well as the heritage site permit.
I think you already hold that. So the, the question, I think, to answer, if I think I'm getting to the question correctly, is, yes, if there are, if you are closing public streets or using additional county resources, then it would qualify as a special event. So you would need that. And I, and we have worked with a couple of your colleagues to draft um, some amendments to provide some additional clarity on that fact, which we will be discussing shortly.
At the appropriate time. Um, just one more follow-up question. Um, and I do want to say to police, um, fire career, fire volunteers, thank you for staffing these events. Um, thank you for sacrificing your weekends. Um, I know that's time away for your families, but you all have a heart of service. And I thank you. Um, I did want to go back to the Easter egg hunt, um, example. We've used a lot of examples here. And I, I go to this one specifically because there is an Easter egg hunt held annually in the fifth district in a community park, which is separate from our regional parks. But it is a very large event, tons and tons of kids. Um, I, I appreciate that you all go to Easter egg hunts. You can't beat everyone. I haven't seen one at this one. So if all of these Easter egg events that happen at regional parks and/or community parks now have to go through this process, are we taxing resources even more for Easter egg hunts?
So this, this would be a county community park, or is this a community association?
It is a county community park.
So they presumably get the permit already from Department of Record Parks, or they do not need to get a permit?
They do, from my understanding, but it's another example of they get that permit, but this is a special event under the definition.
So in that case, there's an amendment coming that will address some of that.
Looks like we're getting towards amendment time.
I mean, the, the reason I wanted this conversation because it, one, uh, the audience as well as the public uh, really wants to deep dive into this. And so I was willing to stay here as long as, 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 as required to make sure we get all of these, uh, these questions out. Because this is, is a significant impact to the normal use of parks and events and things like that. We're changing behavior, and so needs to be clarity. Mr. Volker.
So are we. We're here all night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, before I go into my questions, because Mr. Pruski's here, I'm going to say this. We haven't done questions like this in four years, and I love it. Where we get to like keep going and keep asking follow-ups. So I'm, I love it. This is great. Thank you. So in some ways, I think that problem that public safety in this county has is you're a victim of your own success, right? That's the reality. You, you've done, what I heard you say is, we always find a way to get to yes, right? We always find a way to stretch staffing, we always find a way to call somebody in, we always find an answer for this. And so the challenge that I have is, I am looking at this going, I'm not hearing the problem then. What I'm hearing is, there could be problems. I'm hearing speculative concerns, but I'm also hearing that you guys do a tremendous job, every men and women, always do a tremendous job making sure that whatever comes in is staffed. So I think in some ways, that's the challenge I'm having, and it's probably not fair, but that's just the reality of what I'm hearing. Um, but the, there were a couple of things that were said that I, I think are interesting. People have been referred to certain organizations as good operators, right? Well, then that infers, or, or the, sort of the natural corollary to that is there are bad operators. To me, I don't know who defines a good operator and a bad operator, right? That's not spelled out in this bill. That seems like that's a way that you all look at something. One of the things that I heard is, sometimes you don't see eye to eye with people or you have non-responsive organizers. But then I'm hearing, you're always finding a way to get to yes. So there are conflicting things that I'm hearing coming out of the panel in terms of what you all are having in experience, right? Um, and maybe that's because you're so decentralized in all these different experiences that you're having that you can't bring them all through a central clearinghouse, which may be what you're trying to do with this. Which is why I think some of the points that Ms. Rodvian made about notice as opposed to permission, you know, give us more notice and make sure that you have to give notice, things like that, that could certainly be a way that you solve some of your problems. I hear you saying that you could have a problem down the road, but you're just not having it yet. You haven't brought it up. And then the other thing that is interesting to me is, every example that you all have talked about, save for the one that Chief Schultz mentioned with the people who wanted to go in the bay, is much larger than fifty people. So this bill defines public assembly as fifty people or more. But what I'm hearing, most of what you're concerned about is large concerts at the fairgrounds, large assembly events, maybe at Laurel Racetrack or Maryland Live, or places around the county that can hold these types of numbers. So I think the question for me becomes, is fifty the right number? Is that really targeting who we are looking at in terms of these types of events that you all are saying this is what we want to make sure we're protecting people from? So I, I guess my sort of wraparound on this, because it's a lot more comments than questions, is I think you guys do a tremendous job. If I could get a little more clarity on the good operators versus the bad operators versus the, we say yes to everything, or we find a way to get to yes, versus we have people who are non-responsive to us, because there are conflicting things that are coming to us and as policymakers. I, I loved when Ms. Rodvian was talking about the matrix, and it sounds like maybe you have that already, that exists, that then maybe we codify that instead of this sort of open-ended list that you have here. Because the challenge we have is, and I despise doing this, I don't like making laws that then give all the powers to the bureaucracy. And that's what happens when I pass a law like this, because then you all interpret it and you put out, you promulgate regulations. It's what we have at the state level through COMAR, it's what we have all over the county with, I'll just give an example that annoys me, blue letter. with, I'll just give an example that annoys me, blue letters and green notices and all these other things that are not law. They're just literally interpretations of the department about what we've passed and what it means. And it gives you all an awful lot of discretion, and I think that laws should come through us. So if you can give us that matrix so that we can potentially add it to this bill, that to me is better, because then there are objective standards that people are looking at and saying, I meet this or I don't. If I have this many people, I have to do this. Instead, there is insufficient number of toilets. Well, who decides that? Maybe you have this matrix. Is the matrix published? How do people know where that is? The code is the law. So I'm just sort of summing all this up in terms of my comments about this entire bill and the way that it's been drafted, and I think it sounds like there's a lot of common ground from the council to make some changes to it in ways that may tweak this based on some of the public comments. So if you all have anything you want to shoot back at me, I'm happy to hear it. Those are just my sort of wraparound comments from what I've heard.
Yes, sir. I'll let Chief Schultz talk maybe a little bit about the numbers, but I wanted to talk about a quick example of events that were bad events. And Mr. Faber, who's here today, is very well familiar with that. With a couple of previous concerts last year at the fairgrounds, we received notice through our intelligence section of some entertainment artists who were scheduled to utilize the facility at the fairgrounds, unbeknownst to Mr. Faber and his crew, that at their previous events, there had been numerous gun incidents where there was in fact two homicides at previous events that happened there. And we had probably about two weeks' notice that this was happening. So we had to ramp up a lot of responsive police to this event. The promoter was not being very forthcoming with number of ticket sales, amounts of people that were going to be there, and we were at the point where we were having to rely on either Mr. Faber canceling their contract or going through other mechanisms such as an injunction, because this was a very dangerous event. And one of those concerts with those types of artists, the promoters self-cancelled the event, so we didn't have an issue. The other event, we were able to put an adequate amount of resources there. We were able, as you said, being a victim of our own good service, we were able to get the event pulled off without an incident. But during that incident, there was actually a medical incident that occurred where there was a collapse of a fence, and numerous people were injured and had to be transported to the hospital. So had we not had the police and fire resources there that we scrambled to put there, and we said, hey, we can't staff this, and they still had that event, there potentially could have been people who could have lost their lives when the incident happened and several people got trampled. They thought it was, excuse me, gunfire, so there was a mass stampede of people that ran. Police, security, and fire were able to get that under control. So that's an example, again, of a vendor that we were able to pull this off, but they were not very forthcoming, and the police were able, we were able to find that out through intelligence that this event was coming to the county. That's not every event of these hundred and fifty or two hundred that come, but that's just a small example of the types of events. And it's mostly when we're talking about concerts and then vendors or promoters who do not, are not very forthcoming with what they're trying to have. They disguise event and say it's a community bike issuance event or a Christmas event, and then it turns out that it's a concert with alcohol. And in previous events that have happened around the country, there's been actual violent events that have happened there.
Thank you. Now, let's go back to, are you finished?
I had a follow-up. No, no, go ahead. I think there might be more, though, from the panel.
So, I want to, you know, in clarity about, about the getting to yes.
I like that, though.
No, I do, too. There's a piece to getting a yes that is something really all of our organizations really want to do for our community. The other piece is this, and it was a really great question brought up by Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Rodvian, and the gentleman testified to this, right? We could, we could, we could say no, we could scale down things. We've just been very lucky that there hasn't been a catastrophe at something. And I think the reason we make it happen is because we understand, to your question about liability, you don't have to look past the event in Houston, Astroworld, in just in 2020. Twelve or thirteen fatalities in a crowd rush. The city of Houston, the city of Houston Fire Department, Police Department are all named in countless lawsuits. And in fairness to them, they didn't have a lot of notice about that event. They weren't involved in that. So we say yes, A, because it's the right thing to do, but B, because if not, the liability if something goes wrong, we're going to be on the hook for that anyway.
You said you had a follow-up, right?
I do, yeah. And totally understand that, and I fully track with you on the liability piece. I don't know that you're going to have stampedes or that kind of concern at a person, event of, or an event with fifty-one people, right? Or a hundred people. I totally understand it when you get to a thousand, twenty-five hundred and greater. So I just wonder if there's some degree of nuance that we can craft in here where what we're targeting is maybe some of these larger events, because it just seems like with the fifty-person limit, that's such a low bar, that it's almost like, it feels like, as one gentleman said, it's a power grab, right? To bring everything in. What I hear from you is all good intentions, and I think the panel's intent in this bill is not to go and grab power. I don't get the sense from you that that's what you're trying to do, but that's how people perceive it. And so we've got to balance those two things, and I recognize that, and I think you do, too. So I just wonder if there's a way to target this more specifically to what you're looking at, which is some of these larger-scale events where you're not getting enough notice. I wonder if we could do something where we say, you know, if you're going to be over this number of people, you have to not give us thirty days' notice or whatever. You've got to give us a hundred and eighty days' notice. Like, we really need to have a long range out there on you, because that gives you the ability, if they are not being forthcoming with the fair or whoever they're working with, you have time to go to court. You have time to get the injunction. You have time to shut them down. And there's other avenues exist for you. So I just don't know if that's something that we could consider in terms of, will that solve your problem? So I don't expect you to answer that right now, but that's something I'd like to follow up with you all on. Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you very much. And I, there's several points I want to touch on that my colleagues have spoken about. When we're talking about providing a clearer matrix for, you know, what does refreshment facilities mean, what are adequate toilet facilities per person that's going to be attended? The other spot that I think that would be, that a lot of folks would love to see is, when I'm looking at page six, line thirteen, cost estimate. It says, "Prior to issuing the permit, the county will provide a sponsor with an estimate of costs based on a publicly available standardized rate schedule." Again, where do they find that rate schedule? And I think it would be helpful if the organizer, the sponsor, was able to see that cost prior to applying for the permit as well, because they may decide, you know, hey, we can, if we do this ourselves, we could save money, versus being told after they apply for the permit. I'm trying, I think it could be a more efficient system and eliminate some fear and guesswork. So it's just a suggestion.
So there is a schedule that will be part of the portal application, and I guess to clarify your point in terms of, we need that information to calculate the cost, so there has to be that initial step.
Right.
Right, of doing that. And then, but that doesn't change the security that's needed, right?
Correct.
But they can say, you know what, I don't want county resources. I'm going to hire my own people, because it's.
So it's X number of dollars for X number of police, it's X amount of dollars for X number of EMS or for fire, and then it would give the organizer the option to say, well, I'm going to shop around and see if I can do better elsewhere, or, no, I definitely want to use the county, because that's the best deal. I think it would, if folks knew where to find that information when they're in the planning stage, rather than even before they get in to actually apply for the permit, it may facilitate trust and a little bit more comfort level. Because we are, I mean, some of these events, I mean, was mentioned, we're talking, you know, thousands upon thousands of dollars upfront costs, and to have a better idea of what those are going to be, I think is, would be incredibly helpful for everyone.
And I think the, with the portal and the website, that we are going to have all the information on, that'll be made available to the applicant and updated yearly, because standards do change.
Right.
Rates do change, and that's going to be the transparency that we'll provide.
Okay, awesome. Can I do a follow-up?
One more.
So in regards to the portal, and this is a little bit of, I guess, anecdotal experience from a county resident who, and I'm sharing this to illustrate, I think, some of the concerns that folks have. They recently were trying to get a bingo license for a community event. They went to get help. The employee who processes the bingo license, or the bingo permit, rather, for this one-time fundraiser, wasn't sure what documentation that was needed, didn't know how to attach them into the online system, and then the online system wasn't populating properly. The result was, in this particular case, this community group did not get their bingo permit for their event, which in the end changed how much money that they were able to raise for their community purpose. And then it also led to quite a large number of disappointed folks who were expecting the event to be one thing, they'd paid and bought a ticket. And so the fear is that now this will be, you know, negatively impact their ability to have a successful event in the future. And I know that we're talking, to some extent, apples to oranges here, but when you're comparing the efficiency for a permit process that we already have in place, and residents are having trouble navigating it successfully, it's, I think, easy to understand why they would have concerns about being able to navigate, you know, and I hold this because it's my printed copy of the bill, this bill successfully. And I don't necessarily, I'm not, you might, I'm asking you to think about that and to process that, because I think that is, as some of the folks testified tonight, recognize that there is, for a lot of people, not a lot of trust in institutions right now. And so this is all, it's all part of what's going into the concerns behind this bill.
We hear you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. My last question before we go to amendments. If, let's say someone does do the process, and they have an event for five hundred people, and they go through the application, their plan, facility plan, addresses those five hundred anticipated people, but fifteen hundred show up on the day of the event, what happens to the operator? Are they, are they fined or assessed any resources because you bill them up because it, you know, more than five hundred came to the event? What happens in that instance? They did everything right, and online sales showed five hundred, but then on the day of the event, fifteen hundred shows up, and they didn't know that it was going to happen. What happens to them?
Okay, so there's not a, again, it's a long night. They weren't being untruthful, right?
Right, correct, correct, correct.
Out of hand.
Like our political fundraisers, we may hate, we may say seventy-five are coming and fifty show up, which happens all the time. But the reverse of that, with events that wind up getting online, for example, and they get, it gets shared around, but, you know, people don't, they wait till the last minute, literally. And so a lot of event planners literally may give you their best assessment of who shows up, a number, and it's, let's say it's five hundred, and somehow on the day of the event, fifteen hundred show up, and you have to mobilize resources to go there. Are they assessed a fee or utilization of those services when they, you know, they were truthful in their processes, but more than that came out, and are you going to assess them a fee or of service for that?
So there is no provision in the bill to require a fine or any kind of punitive measure in a circumstance like that?
Check. Okay, all right, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment delays the application and collection of registration fees and special fees until January one, 2024.
All right. Mr. Barron.
Yes, this is by our request. In discussing this bill, it became clear that there are vendors and promoters who have been making plans and booking events well into advance. And so in sort of the spirit of providing a runway for this bill, this amendment delays fees and registration fees and the special fees on the event from being applied until January first, 2024. We ask you to pass this amendment.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay. D four, the motion, and D two did the, second, I think that's right?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter.
I'm sorry. Any discussion on amendment number one? I didn't see any likes.
[inaudible].
No, he, but he just gave the, the statement.
Please vote for it.
All right, so please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on, I'm sorry, please, yeah, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment excludes from the definition of special events and agritourism event held on private property that does not require the exclusive use of public streets or roads or the use of county services exceeding normal operations, and excludes agritourism and farm or agricultural heritage site special events authorized by the planning and zoning officer.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the administration for a very productive conversation about this language. This bill stems from the fact that agritourism and an agritourism event and farm or agricultural heritage site special event are already defined in the code, and there is a particular permit process in place already for an agritourism special event. And so having to go through the duplicate permit process felt like an incredible burden to our agricultural industry, and we're looking to just have that further clarified and outlined in this bill, to avoid them having to do the same thing twice.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the version of the amendment that I was provided until a little bit before tonight's hearing only added agricultural event held on private property that does not require the exclusive use of public streets or roads or the use of county services exceeding the normal operations. It did not include that number four language that, oh, it's off the screen now, that included the, a complete exemption. Can you maybe, thank you so much. Can you maybe give us a little bit more on what the addition of what appears to be in a blanket exemption, even if the, and maybe I'm reading it wrong and reading it on the fly, even if the event exceeds a threshold or uses county resources or uses public streets? That would be number four in agritourism event or farm or agricultural special event that's defined in eighteen of this code authorized by the planning and zoning officer. So maybe I'm reading that wrong?
Well, no, you're not reading it wrong, but first, I'm not sure how that didn't get sent, so apologies on that.
There were a lot of amendments flying around. It's okay.
So, did not intend to surprise. There is already a, this is through the Office of Planning and Zoning, an agritourism event and a farm or agricultural heritage site special event is, has a definition within the code, and there is already a very specific permit, permitting process in place for those events. And so this is to eliminate the, having to do the same thing twice is the intent.
Okay. I think.
Because these are folks who already hold these events, they go through an awful lot of trouble, time, expense, in order to hold these agricultural heritage site permits that are attached to that piece of property.
I just want to make sure I, that we are okay. I mean, we're not trying to make, we're not trying to double permit events like, like in that if they've already verified with our public safety agencies that they have the adequate life safety support, we would be fine. I just don't know if that is part of planning and zoning's review, if that makes sense.
Understand.
So maybe we could. So, if maybe we could, don't want to say we support it, I don't want to say we oppose it, maybe can we put it at the end or, or bring it back at the next meeting where we've had a chance to, to flush it out a little bit?
If you, let's try to put it at the end, I'm comfortable with that, if that's something that we can do. I may have handy what it is you're looking for. I just gotta, give me a second.
Point of order. Matt, real quick, her, to put it at the end, what's that process? Okay, all right, so, do you want to go ahead and make that motion then? Since it's your.
Motion to move amendment number two to the end.
Right, and someone in the second, correct.
Radveen, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to roll call? Okay, all right.
Ms. Ledbetter. Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to move amendment number two to the end of all of the amendments has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three. This, this amendment eliminates the $50 application fee for a special event permit.
So I put this amendment in to strike the $50 application fee as an incentive, I think, to get applicants and sponsors or events coordinators to actually communicate. I didn't think it was necessary to, to charge this one, especially if we're going to penalize them within the 100, 100-day or six, two-month window if they didn't do it. So in my mind, this would incentivize individuals for actually completing it in a timely manner so that they didn't have to pay anything. And so that was the reason I put this amendment in to, to strike that $50 application fee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the conversation we had in advance on this, this issue. I think the, the county feels that the coming amendments better balance a fee issue. The, the way that this would be drafted, the way this would be applied would be a blanket exemption.
That's correct.
From the fee for everybody.
Correct.
Our, our concern here is there is some cost in applying the permitting, working through the permitting process, so there is a level of cost to the taxpayer.
Do we know how much the anticipated tax for the $50 fee is projected?
Well, given that we haven't had a full year of, of, of permits coming in, this is a totally new structure, there is, there's only estimates that we have. So there is a cost to the county, even if it's a dollar, our, I think our position here is there are some coming amendments that provide some relief valves for community associations.
So, so I read those, I did read those. It still left it up to the administration to determine whether or not that relief valve was going to be implemented. And so for me, I thought it was pertinent that we start from, at least the amendments that I, that I had read, that are projected to come tonight. I think it still left it up to the administration to determine whether or not it was in the best interest of the county to apply that $50 sets fee. We're not talking about the penalty, penalty fee, that's, that's the second phase of this. This is just the $50 application fee.
Yeah, again, I think there, there's, nobody likes paying fees, we get it, but there is a, there is a reason why the, the county requires permitting fees. It does help ensure compliance, and I think what, we would prefer that the council reject this amendment.
And that's fine. We, we spoke about the, I still love you. I think, I think the seven of us all, all come from different lenses, and how, and there are eight people that decide the fate of Anarona County, and, and all eight of us have an opinion on how that should be implemented. And so this is one mechanism, I think, would help the citizens more so than, than hurt them or penalize them for actually getting us that information. So, outside of that, any discuss, or motion to adopt?
You moved it, I seconded it.
All right, any discussion? I'll see, Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I, I tend to agree with the administration that there's an incentive when you have to pay a fee, but I would like, and I hope something we'll keep exploring as we go on this, maybe some clarification on who, who and what can be, have the fee waived. But when I look at some of these big actors, $50 is a very minimal amount to get them going on the process. You know, when I hear from the fairgrounds, we have the monster truck rally and the, you know, hot tub place, $50 is for those for-profit events, I just don't see as a huge, as a burden on them. I look forward to some clarification on how we could do waivers for our community associations and things, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on a complete waiver for everyone for that.
Mr. Volkey.
I am, I'm sold. I'm there. I also just wanted to add, it's not just the eight of us, the more that we keep delegating our power to other people, the less say we have in what happens in Anarona County. So that's why I want that matrix, but I'm with you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I would agree with my colleague from District Four. This puts, actually, I just disagree with the whole concept that this puts the burden on, on the taxpayer. This, this puts the burden on the taxpayer if we waive this fee. And we have numerous licenses and permits, pages of them that have nominal fees, and I just think it's a slippery slope going down on this, on this wavelength, so I'm a no on this one.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I don't know if this would be Madam Auditor or the administration, but we do have a fiscal note. So we do know, based on last year's history, how much we could generate in revenue through this, so I would assume that we could give some estimates on if every event that would have qualified last year came back next year, what would that mean for staff to process all of these? Take out maybe 30% for those that are waived, get some kind of mid-range number and lowball and say, okay, a whole lot of folks don't come back because of whatever the end result of this bill is, what is that? So some kind of range on the cost that it, the county is going to have to incur for the application process, I think would be helpful. Having said that, to Mr. Smith's point, we don't know how many are coming back next year, and it will depend on whatever the final bill form is, so I'd feel more comfortable determining what that fee is, if a fee is needed at all, down the road, as opposed to right now. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm always late with my lights.
No, no, go ahead.
So I'm kind of, would like a little bit of moderation here, because right now, we're requiring events as small as 50 people, which could, which could amount to, like, an example, I spoke with a constituent about a, a parking lot carnival by a PTA, so it's not inside a school, but it has, you know, 100 people attending. Do we want to make that organization pay $50? I say no, but I also am working on an amendment that I'm okay to mention, that would bring that 50-person threshold up significantly to something more like 500.
Thank you.
Which we'll discuss later, or, at a future meeting.
Appreciate the opportunity to discuss with the public safety professionals what that appropriate threshold would be. Again, I think the, the amount of the, that the county brings in here is, is not going to be huge, right? I think even you can see that in the fiscal note, to Ms. Fiedler's question, the majority of the estimated cost recovery in the fiscal note is related to county services, so it would be those, those events that are using county services that would then reimburse the county for those additional public safety services generally. The, the application fee is, is rather nominal. I think our position is it is part of a normal application process, and we have amendments coming up that we think better apply this rather than providing out-of-state, out-of-county promoters a taxpayer subsidy. Thank you.
So, you totally forgot about the Madam, the Madam Auditor's fiscal note, that did reference, and this is based off of FY22 data in which she looked at 64 events, that that 50, that fee might incur anywhere between $3,200 and $6,400. And so, again, my issue wasn't with the, the cost of, because that's a very small amount of money generated, and you're right, the larger entities will easily absorb 50 bucks. It's, it's the mom and pops, it's the, it's the, the Pruski football games or Turkey Bowls that might clog up the traffic and, you know, saving them $50 that they can put on, on, you know, other things for that, for that event. I think, in this instance, I feel like it would encourage them to actually, because if they don't have, if it's free, they would be more encouraged to actually, because the end state of this bill is its awareness. Let's, let's clear this up. The end state of this bill is so that the police and fire department are aware of critical events that may leverage county resources. That is our goal, that we're working on from the, from the administration, as well as the county council. The goal is not $6,400, the goal is safety. And so if, if it's, if this is a mechanism to allow them and encourage them to do it because they don't have to pay anything, I think you're going to get a lot more participation in that process, instead of, no matter who signs up, they pay the $50, and so everybody is penalized on it. I think, I think just makes it a little bit more easier to, to absorb. And so, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just have to remind my colleagues that the, at the end of all of these, the application process, are county employees sitting, doing their jobs. So if, if it is the will of this council to waive these fees, you are now allowing the taxpayer to absorb all of that. This is, this might be $3,200 or $6,400 for this application fee, but we have others. I mean, are you going down a slippery slope here? I don't, I'm not going to point out on the website where they're all listed, because that could be your next bill.
Okay, I'll look at that.
But it's, I can't, it's just sort of maddening to think that a, a big concert promoter comes in here and we're not, we're going to have the taxpayers pay for their processing of their application. It's 50 bucks. When there's a provision in here to, to potentially waive and amendments coming about waiving other, other potential applicants, community services, nonprofits, et cetera, I just, this is.
And that's fair. Right now, they, there's no money coming in right now, it's, it's, nothing is happening right now, so we're not, we're not saving anything because we're, and, and as the chief said, you guys find a way to yes anyway. So I'm grateful you do that, because I think the county employees, yes, they do work hard, and I'm grateful for them, but they, most of them, a lot of them still live in the county as well, but I, I don't see this as a, as a hindrance, at least my personal opinion, to the execution of this, this bill, to get to that end state of public safety. Let us never forget what this is about. So, Madam, please call the roll, roll call on amendment number three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please.
Number four.
Yep, number four, amendment number four.
Amendment number four. This amendment edits the vehicular component of the definition of special event to require compliance with normal and usual traffic rules.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'd like to thank the administration for having a very productive dialogue with me on this particular amendment. I heard from a lot of residents who had particular concern over, for my colleagues, if you look on page one, line 44, number two, it currently reads, "The safe and normal movement of vehicular tra, and pedestrian traffic along roadways may be affected or require temporary alter, alterations to establish traffic regulations or controls." The feedback I was hearing from folks in the community was that the safe and normal movement of vehicular or pedestrian traffic along roadways could easily be interpreted as more traffic on the roads. And there was a fear that if you're having an event and you, you're providing plenty of parking, or maybe it just backs up while people are trying to get into their parking, the parking lot, you are now altering the way traffic is flowing, and so therefore, they suddenly are defined as a special event when otherwise they wouldn't be. And so after some discussion with the administration and kind of dialing down to what the intent, what we were looking for is language, which is what is in this amendment, to better describe the actual blockage of a road. So imagine double parking, to the point where you cannot, no longer traffic, travel safely on a two-lane road, a fire truck or an emergency vehicle might not be able to get through. So we're trying to more accurately, accurately capture that type of situation, not just increased traffic flow.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the sponsor. I think we had some pretty extensive conversations. I think there's, as you all have seen, this is a complicated issue in getting the, the language right, where you're not, you're not jeopardizing public safety by being too loose with the language, but not unfairly impeding the great events that happen in, in across this county. So we went back and forth at length on, on this, and appreciate the collaborative spirit, and we support.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a point. So I, I mentioned this to Mr. Bennett, I think there's a problem, it's a technical problem with this amendment, because it references page one, and really, it should reference page two. So I think we're going to have to probably not go forward with this right now and fix it, right?
No, I'm going to fix it.
You can do it on the fly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to change it, it should be page two.
Understood.
No wonder I couldn't find it.
Do you want to, let's move this to the end as well, or take a slight recess, or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm just making a, just a on-the-fly technical correction to say on page two.
Check.
Because otherwise, it would be sort of nonsensical, right?
Understood.
So that's what the sponsor intended, and so that's what I'm doing.
Correct.
And everyone's okay with it? Okay, all right.
It's been motioned and seconded, so, did you want me to read the roll, or are you still talking?
I, I'm okay, as long as you made the correction on the actual document, and we're referring to page two in that, the documents that are page one.
Yes, the official file copy now says on page two of the proposed bill, strike in their entirety lines 44 through 46 inclusive and substitute, and then it shows that same language.
So please call the roll on amendment number four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the, please read amendment number five.
Amendment number five. This amendment allows the county to change or waive certain filing deadlines for reasons such as a response to a sudden or unexpected event.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. This again is a result of some conversations with residents concerned about trying to give a little bit more definition to some language to have direction. And one of the things that was discussed was that when something happens current event-wise, and, you know, an organizer 24 hours ago didn't see the need for the event, now something happened in, in the world, in the community, and there is a reason to have an event, it's not possible to have gotten your permit in advance, and so this is language to show that this is the type of, an example of something that would be given a waiver of those filing deadlines. And I'd like to thank the administration again for cooperation on this language.
Right, I was getting ready to say that this weekend, there was a lot of emails going back between Mr. Barron, and, and we apologize for ruining your weekend and having you work on these, these amendments, but definitely appreciate it. Mr. Barron.
Appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, but it comes with the job. So, yeah, I, I think as the, the sponsor, maker of the amendment referenced, the, the idea behind here is, you know, nothing in this bill can override you know, nothing in this bill can override the First Amendment, for example. But there, the language in the bill could lead somebody to say, well, you know, what if there is, you know, a, a, I'll use a, an example of a, somebody prominent who passes away and the community wants to gather and hold a vigil, right? It's not quite a funeral procession? Where are we on that? So, this would be a response to a spontaneous event. So, it wouldn't necessarily be a, a free speech type situation, but it would be the need for the community to assemble. And so, that was the intent behind this language, and, and we ask you to support it.
Thank you. May I motion to adopt?
Stand left.
Mr. Secretary, second. Madam Secretary, any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess my only concern with this, and I don't know whether Mr. Hunt from law has any thoughts on this, but the idea of sort of enumerating one thing would begin to suggest, are there other things that we should be enumerating as well? So, the way it's written currently, it's, it's pretty broad. It gives the county discretion. But then you add this in and you say, this is the type of thing that we're thinking about. So, then I wonder, are there other things out there that we should be spelling out too? It's almost like, you know, listing something, is, is this going to be limiting in some way because we're listing something specific? Do you have any concerns about that?
I don't, as long as the such-as language is included. And that was something that we wrestled with as the bill was being drafted, was start, once you start enumerating things, you get a very, very long list.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I'm curious, does waiving certain filing deadlines, could that amount to waiving a filing requirement altogether?
No, that would just be the date by which the application has to be filed.
I think going back to the example, the vigil example, I think, I don't know, in my experience in District Six over the past five years, these are like totally spontaneous, planned in a conversation over Facebook, saying such-and-such was, you know, was a victim of gun violence and we're all going to meet in X park and, you know, light candles and speak about this person who's now deceased. And I can't imagine even in that situation, someone thinking, and it's not a funeral, like you said, it's not a funeral procession, but I can't imagine that, you know, friends of somebody who was just murdered, for example, are going to be thinking, oh, I better apply for a permit so we can all go meet in the park and light candles. Do you know what I mean? So, I'm curious if it could be extended to that.
So, i- in, in the plain reading of this, the decision would allow us to waive certain filing deadlines, which could allow a remediation after the event, right? Just, this is all about awareness for our police department, so, and our, our, our public safety agencies. So, I, I wouldn't want, I don't think, we, we were very careful to draft something that would catch lots of events, but this is not intended to be a gotcha. So, I, I don't know how we would draft the, the example that you're getting at.
But you would ask them maybe to file for a permit after the fact? Does that?
It's late. I don't know.
Okay. Could, maybe we just say, waiving this, the filing deadline is waived to infinity.
Well, maybe we can, yeah, we could waive to infinity.
2,100.
I see the Office of Law had the light on at the end. Maybe they're more alert at this moment.
I was just going to say, I'm not sure how that would even fall under the definition of a special event because, I mean, I don't know that vigils often need a police or fire presence or if it would be, but they, I could be wrong. That's right. I mean, if they're walking down the street, if they're blocking street access, and again, the, the permit is just so that they can plan to block the street.
I think it could very much need police, especially if there is an active investigation. There's often people that know things about a homicide present at a vigil. So, I don't, I mean, again, this is probably, but such things happen outside the city limits just as much as in the city limits. So, I think that it could, but I mean, I think this is one of those things, you're, you're, you, you want situational awareness, but you are also aware that you're not always going to get it.
I was going to ask something.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number, was that, which amendment was that?
Five. Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number five has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number six.
Amendment number six. This is, there we go. This amendment allows the county to waive an application fee under certain enumerated circumstances.
This is waived after kicking.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I think in the emails that were going back and forth, there was the intent that this was going to be adjusted for the, you could correct me if I'm wrong, the sponsor of the, the amendment. What, which we just eliminated. I think.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
I'll let the sponsor speak real quick.
I believe that we, what we've, that First Amendment number, waiving of the $50 was waiving of the $50. But my understanding is that the $100.
That's what I thought was an email.
Still exists.
That it gives you the ability to waive the $100. That's what I thought we were drafting with that Sixth Amendment. That's, but that's not, that's not this.
Because amendment number, da-da-da-da, trying to find it. Because amendment number three passed, then the only fee ref, left to reference by number six is the $100 fee if you put in your application after the preferred deadline. Does that answer the question that folks were asking?
Okay, do you want to withdraw?
Sure. So, the intent of this amendment was for certain types of, to, again, the, the such-as language was used at the suggestion of Office of Law to avoid enumerating specifics in order to keep, this is an idea, examples of types. So, a spontaneous response to a current event, an activity for educational institution, community association, nonprofit organization, activity requires a license under Title II, farm or agricultural heritage site, special events, or an activity requiring county department or recreation and parks permit for the same event.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Yeah.
If I may, it looks like, so, under amendment number seven, there is that special service charge that, that's the one I thought we were, so if we want to withdraw, if you want to withdraw number six, seven, I think was where, is what, at least I thought that was in the email. But it's your amendment. Oh, yeah.
I'm fine with withdrawing for, and we can, we can, we can regroup.
Obviously, to come back and clarify.
Yeah.
This obviously is creating confusion.
Yeah. Well, with, withdraw for now, number six.
All right.
So noted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven. This amendment allows the county to waive the special service charges when the county can provide needed resources to support the special event and a waiver is in the best interest of the county.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Again, want to thank the administration for productive conversations about this particular clause. This was to help further clarify, under worst circumstances, these special service charges would be charged or would not be charged. So, if the, the, if the county determines that it can supply adequate resources, I'm sorry, it's late and my brain just got twisted too. It allows the waiving of the special service charges when the county can provide the needed resources to, to support the special event.
Mr. Barron, and you can weigh in on this. I, I think in the emails that came after that fee waiver with amendment number seven specifically, I think the intent with the language that was going this weekend was that if the, the service fee having the ability for you all to waive if you so choose, that was, that was the intent on, I don't know, that was the intent with, with amendment number seven, but I'm not sure this, this language speaks to that.
No, so, the intent of numbers, number seven was, in the situation where a nonprofit or something was having a large-scale event, was in the best interest of the county.
Right.
To support it, we would be able to provide those resources and waive any county costs so that the Rotary Club, for example, wouldn't have to reimburse the county.
Okay.
So, that was the intent.
That's what I thought. That was my expectation.
Yes.
So, obviously, Mr. Volkey.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
That's what the bill says already, though.
Yes.
The bill literally says in there, waive payment of all or a portion of the special service charges if the county determines that a waiver is in the best interest of the county. All I can tell that this amendment's doing is saying that they can only do it in these circumstances, which seems to limit their ability to do a waiver. And then it adds this language about supply adequate resources, which is sort of inferred in the fact that the county wouldn't waive it because if the county couldn't supply adequate resources, the county wouldn't waive it. It wouldn't be in the best interest of the county. So, I can't follow anything on this.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry. No, 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 that's fair. We were, we were trying to thread a needle here and, you know, I think the, the idea behind it was, we felt the bill as we drafted it, covered it. I think you've heard conversation from folks who did not think we did. So, we're trying to provide clarity.
Ms. Ledbetter.
So, I needed to look at it in a spot with the change highlighted where it was in all, when it, so that would be written out so you could see it. So, when you, when you put it in, it reads, waiver of special service charges. The county may waive a payment of all or a portion of the special service charges only if the county determines that it can supply adequate resources to support the special event, and the county determines that the waiver is in the best interest of the county. And from the conversations that we were having, the intent here, and, and it's possible that we may need to, to rework the language further, the, the intent here is that to waive the service charges as long as the county can actually supply those resources for the special event.
So, if I, if I may, I would probably withdraw this one and go back, since it's already going to be modified, there's two weeks to, to address.
Yep. Withdraw.
So noted.
Thank you. All right. It's, and that's all of the amendments for?
Yeah, I'm not doing eight. No, it's good.
So, can you just say that you're?
You want me to just say it? I'm not going to move eight, so.
Okay. All right. So, bill number 1323 will be heard on April 3, 2023. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 1523.
Sorry about that. Bill number 1523, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Business Complexes as a Conditional Use.
All right. Ms. Fiedler? What's that? Oh, you, okay. You want to go, we can go back to that. I thought it was at the end of all the. Who's, whose amendment was number two? And ju, and just for the record, we voted earlier to table, to the end of the discussion on bill, actually, on 1323, amendment number two, if you, you all recall that. And so, at this point, at this time, we're going to move that or close the voting of 1323 at this moment. And, no, 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 we're, I'm going back to 1323.
Wait a minute. Point, point of work, can you do that if we've already moved in the agenda through?
So, parliamentarian, go ahead. What do you think? What?
Yeah.
But shouldn't we still vote on that to do that since we actually did a, a specific vote to?
Yep.
Check. Okay. All right. No, I think we already, this, yeah. Okay. Correct. So, we will take up 15, I'm sorry, 1323 amendment number two at the next meeting. Just want to make that the clarif, clarification point. Correct. Correct. Yep. That's just it, didn't it? Oh. Bill number 1323, as amended, I like this, will be heard on April 3, 2023. I know. All right. Madam Secretary, please read title of bill number 1523.
Bill number 1523, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Business Complexes as a Conditional Use.
All right. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to get through this as quickly as possible, but I know that we did not discuss this at the work session. So, 1523, when you read through it and apply all conditions, does apply to one property in the county, and that is the property location of the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Station. This, actually, not this council, the previous council passed an amendment to the general development plan granting that property commercial land use. As we know, the comprehensive rezoning process has been a bit delayed. And in that time, the volunteers have found multiple grant opportunities that some do come with a requirement for shovel readiness, and that timeline for comprehensive rezoning is, is going to be a, a challenge for them. This bill is a text amendment that will allow for the volunteers to fulfill steps necessary to pursue funding opportunities that will make the building of a new fire station possible. And just as a reminder, this volunteer fire station houses both career and volunteer firefighters. They've tried for years on their own to raise enough money to build a new fire station, but unfortunately, bingo and carnival revenue does not raise what it costs to build a new fire station. And they are investing in, in infrastructure that will actually last beyond the life of the building right now. So, this is an important public safety measure so that we are housing our firefighters safely and have longevity in this location for years to come. And I ask for your support this evening.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the sponsors. I hope Ms. Miller, who has stuck it out through the whole meeting, to stay with us, and same with Ms. Kenny. So, yeah, as the sponsor noted, the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Station have been great partners with the community. They provide, provide an essential service. We are happy to support this bill.
Mr. Volkey, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just confirming, that is the only property in the entire county that is affected by this bill, right? That's a, that's a Ms. Miller question, I'm sure.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
To, to our knowledge.
Oh, man.
It is.
Made me nervous with that. I was feeling good about this bill, but you said, all right, okay, all right. I just, I. I just, I, I had talked with Ms. Fiedler early on about this, and I think there were a few other properties that we thought maybe included, but by the way, the language is written, I think that is the only property. Are you familiar with those other properties?
I d- I don't know that I saw that correspondence.
Oh, okay.
I, I can confirm that I have confirmation that it is the only property.
Got it. That's what I need. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, uh, we'll now open the public hearing on bill number 1523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
All right. Also do not see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on bill 1523? Seeing no movement, uh, the public hearing on bill number 1523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 1523.
Bill number 1523, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Business Complexes as a Conditional Use.
Any further, ma'am?
Oh, no.
Oh. The red lights. Um, seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 1523.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 1523 has been passed.
All right. Uh, is there any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the ru-, uh, I'm sorry, that's a, did not get a successful fifth vote there. Is, uh, since there's no other business for tonight, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. The county council is adjourned until April 3rd, 2023.